Okay. Calling the committee of the whole Wednesday, February twenty first to order. Roll call, please.
Marx here.
Ben Somr.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Elkin.
Here.
Ben Blackcomb.
Here.
Plannum.
Here.
Manner.
Here.
Thank you. Um, start with our department head reports and do you have a report from Patty or not?
I do not.
Okay. Mike, you can be first then.
Does that change? I'm used to being last. All right, it's been a few months since I gave one of these reports, but it's been a very busy few months. Um, we just wrapped up tax season at the beginning of February. Anybody that still needs to pay their first half real estate taxes, they now need to go to the Hope County Treasurer. We can no longer accept them in the office here. Anybody that still has personal property taxes though, for like their business assets and things like that, those we still need to accept here. And then we're also doing dog tags still, they're due for, so you don't get a penalty. The last date to not have a penalty is March thirty first. So everybody get your dogs registered if you have them in the city of Amory. Utility bills were due last Thursday and anybody's bills that were not paid got their charges applied. And then I sent out the past due notices today. Um, we're still encouraging people to sign up for automatic payment and email bills to make that process smoother for everybody involved. And so if anybody does want to sign up for automatic payment or email bills, they can just stop in the city hall or check on our website. We were lucky yesterday, we did not have to have a spring primary, which I was relieved about. But election preparation has already begun for the April election. Anybody that wants to register to vote or sign up for absentee ballots can actually do it online through My Vote Wisconsin. It's all in our line process. Or they can stop into City Hall and fill out the form with us and we can get it into the system. And then City Hall has a new face up at the front window. You enter during the last meeting, Megan, and we've been working on getting her trained into things. She has been helping us run all of the many payments that have been coming through between taxes and utilities overlapping and things like that. So it has been a very busy time along with other various maintenance things and learning things on my part. So any questions? All right. Thanks, Hannah.
Thank you. Chief, your turn.
All right, so you can see that the officers for the month of January handled four hundred and eighty-three calls for service. Um, they also handled calls that would constitute an incident report, there was twenty-seven larger cases. Um, the officers also made thirty-one traffic stops in that time period. So even during the cold period, they're all doing traffic stops. Uh, so then some follow-up information for what's going on. Uh, Heather and I started the flexible. Um, we had our kickoff meeting January ninth. And then we, because of me being gone, we had our first work meeting with flexible on February eighth. Um, as of today, I've gone through twenty policies. Uh, some are ready to be approved as written, um, others need to make changes with them. We still have a hundred and fifty-seven to go through. So and we can't release the policies to the officers till we hit the seventy-five percent mark. So a lot of work ahead yet. Um, act, uh, update on Axon. Uh, the body floor cameras, as you can see, we got them in, so they're up and running, we got them into service. Uh, last Thursday, the Axon technicians came in and installed the four fleet, three cameras into the squad cars with the advanced license plate readers. Um, they got all the systems up and running. There was a little bit of a problem with my computer, but that was more on my end than their end. So, uh, the install took about six and a half hours. And so we're up and running with those. Um, we did receive our sidearm indicators for our firearms. The problem was they did not send us our brackets. So we are waiting for our brackets before we can have those installed onto the holsters. And I'm hoping that they're gonna get those sent to us real soon. So the Taser tens are still scheduled to be delivered to us sometime in April. And then we will have training and then get everybody up to date on those. Um, a lot of, I went to a lot of training this last month or a little bit over a month. Uh, January twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, I was at the new police chief's new sheriff's training. Uh, I got a lot of information, a lot of good resources and also got the bad news of being told of all the laws and regulations that we have to get in compliance with. So I am working on that. Um, a lot of it comes from DOJ, um, but we are getting through those. I then attended the Wisconsin Police Chiefs Association's Winter Conference, which was January or February fourth through the seventh. And I also attended the fourth class cities, police chiefs meeting. A lot of information there, a lot of, uh, talk about the legislature that's going through right now that they're trying to pass. Uh, one of the big bills they're trying to pass is to up the payment to the departments for each officer for the training that they get yearly. So it's gonna go from one sixty to three hundred and twenty and they're hoping to get that passed here real quick. Um, there was other couple other legislature laws that they're trying to get passed. And I think one of them is referring back to, um, they're looking into increasing the number of hours retired officers can work without affecting their return. So that might be something to look into for like a part-time status for an officer, because it's only gonna go up. I think right now it's less than six hundred hours and I think they're trying to boost it to at least nine hundred. But I think they're also talking twelve hundred dollars a year, so. Um, just another resource for departments to reach out to, to get staff. Um, and then I've been having meetings with different organizations throughout the community. Uh, Mayor Rick and the fire department were with me when we met with the school staff in regards to school safety and security. Uh, there's a lot more meetings to go there until we get everybody up to date on what has to happen there. Um, I met with the Pope County Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, I met with three different members of the department heads, uh, just to discuss some of the resources that we weren't really aware that they're available to us. And, um, we also discussed some of the problems we're having with their department and kind of some of their expectations of us through their department. Um, and that's gonna be continued with more meetings. Um, I also went to my first Pope County Investigators meeting, because the first couple of meetings they had, I had other things going on, so. And what they talked about there is a lot about the bigger investigations that are going on throughout the county and a lot about the drug activity that's going on currently. Um, and then I also met with the representatives from the Amory Hospital and Clinic. This, um, both their nursing staff and security to this, to start discussions and planning on how to handle incidents if they would occur at the hospital. Um, another big thing that we've been working on besides the policies is that we just went through our criminal justice information audit. Um, I did get most of that completed with them because of the previous audit that was done was actually the wrong audit and there was a lot of errors. But we are now hopefully to the last part of the audit. And I have to have that turned by Friday. And Janet Crone, CGS, was a lot of help to get us through that program, so. Lot of stuff going on in the month.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Any questions?
How is, uh, uh, Ellie Phillips and Sacred Heart going down?
So that's the discussion that another group that I've been in meetings with, and that's kind of a uh, multi-county discussion that's going on right now. Um, as of right now, that is shutting down. That limits us for behavioral health again, but they are talking about a new pilot program that possibly is gonna be out of River Falls. Um, they're talking like thirty beds. And it's gonna be a pilot program of where if we get a chapter or a mental health call and we need to place somebody, they will hold them for the seventy-two hours. So it's a nice close regional access for us. And then if they have to have more treatment after the seventy-two hours, then that facility would make arrangements to transport them to like Winnebago or some other facility. So this is gonna free our officers up from having to make these long trips across the state to Winnebago or Ashland or La Crosse. Because they are realizing that the western part of the state now has no facilities, because we lost Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa. So that is the plan. Um, I don't know when that's gonna take effect, but that's what they are trying to do. And then technically, there's gonna be, I think, six or seven regional facilities like this throughout Wisconsin to try to help alleviate some of the issues.
Good. There are a couple other health systems that are looking at adding adolescent beds as well, which impacts us. Um, Rogers is one of them, so still.
Minnesota?
No, Rogers Behavioral Health, so Southern Wisconsin, still a little bit of a trek, but.
So.
Not if that is Winnebago.
There are some things in the works, but I think it's gonna take a while.
Mm-hmm.
Did you say, no one can hear what you're saying up at the phone table? Yeah, nobody can hear what anybody is, of course, I'm in the back in the chief's seats, but I can't hear either, so.
I just wanted to thank the police department and the public works. I noticed that was, I live on Griffin East and I noticed that the traffic has changed from thirty-five to twenty-five from the beginning, from, uh, where the quick trip is all the way past the bridge. I noticed it and I'm sure my other neighbors that live on Griffin noticed it too. I have noticed somewhat not as fast traffic. There still is some, but thank you so much for doing that.
So me and Jeff have been working on this for two weeks.
Great.
So the biggest, uh, one of the other things that we put in is to the east of SMC, we put a, a speed reduced a head sign. Because SMC was complaining about, because there's a little dip there before their driveway that people were coming in way above thirty-five. So that's where we started. And then, uh, Jeff and I discussed that because of the amount of traffic that's in the Quick Trip uh, Cardinal Glass Hospital area, that we felt that that whole area should be reduced down to twenty-five and not at thirty-five anymore. So we did get that put in place and thanks for Jeff getting the signs put up.
Thank you, I, we appreciate.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Does that have to be, have to go through council to pass that?
I took the ordinances of the police chief and myself can go ahead and do little ones like that. Because it's going from twenty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, you know, it didn't make any sense at all.
I, I know it made it ill, not, not able to prosecute if you said it.
Yeah, the only other place that we, that we can't make changes are on.
Yeah, every sixty-five county highways.
So, so we did take our time and we are looking, and I know me and Sharon talked about this, of possibly some speed signs. When I was at the chief's conference, I did speak to a couple sign companies there with speed signs. Um, and I know that you're looking at between thirty-two hundred to five thousand dollars per sign. Um, so we are trying to look for some grants that might be out there that we can jump on to to try to get a few of those signs and have them put up around town. The one on, uh, Keller Avenue South by the bridge, I think it's outlasted its time. It's, it, we, we've reset it a few times already this winter. It lasts about maybe less than a week and then it goes out again. So I think it's, it's been there a long time and I think it's, it's just getting to the end of its life, so. It's another spot to look at, so.
Thank you, Dan. All right, thanks, Dan. Chief Froome.
Even.
Yeah.
Hello. Uh, so far, right now, we have four firefighters that are actually, um, in their last stages of certifying for firefighter ones. They're doing their hazmat and then they do their practicals in June. And after they do the practical, they pass them to the firefighter ones. So we'll hopefully get more, four more firefighter ones on the department, which is really helpful. Um, it's been a pretty slow month for calls to the fire department, which is a good thing. But spring may come earlier this year and I want to remind everyone that there is no burning of leaves and pine needles in the city, every city limit. Uh, it is a hundred and twenty-four dollar fine if caught doing so. When there is no snow on the ground, then burning fit, burning permits are required to burn brush piles. Go to the city, uh, Amory website and get a burning permit. Um, it's like I said, there's no snow there, it's gonna dry up really quick and I have a feeling we're gonna have a real busy spring. Um, the airboat motor has been ordered. Um, still waiting to hear from Air Ranger on what they're going to do about covering any of the costs for replacing the motor in it. Um, still working on it, but, um, the mechanic's down, Dave got the, they got the motor ordered, they're simply get it, they're putting it together and then put it on. Um, I know we're gonna be talking about this, uh, um, a little bit further down on the agenda, but, um, there was a fire committee meeting. After the last city council meeting, uh, Mr. Karpinski, Pete Karpinski had asked about, uh, not having a ladder truck or, um, uh, not getting a new one. Um, like I said, the one we have is currently on his last leg. So I did contact the, um, the IASL auditor, um, and asked him what our rating would go up to if we didn't have a ladder truck. Um, and this was his reply. He said you would lose your aerial ladder credit, you would lose your fifteen hundred gallon minute pump per credit for that truck. You would lose credit as the third engine. You would lose all the credit for loose equipment ground ladders, um, on the truck. Amy Haldwater, which is the country, uh, would also be affected similarly. However, you don't need the aerial in that area. You do need the pump capacity and it's used as the third engine. Since we were trying to retain a class three, it's impossible to say what the loss of the ladder would be until final result of the retro is determined. Um, remember, I rate one up, so I did the retros, we got one year to make up any, um, discrepancies and we're actually doing really well on it. Um, so we're trying to get back down to where we were. Um, uh, he goes, I cannot be precise because I don't have a baseline to subtract away from the points losing the ladder truck. Uh, the best I can give you right now is that losing the ladder truck would put you in a class four or five. So, I mean, we're gonna jump up to two of them and that's pretty significant. Um, and he said, let me know if you have any additional, um, uh, questions. Um, also, I had the fire committee meeting, um, Ace Carlson asked about the closest fire department that has a ladder truck. New Richmond bought a, I, I used one and the turntable spun and that's out of service. Not only that, but New Richmond's a half hour out just in travel time, let alone page time. Firefighters getting to the station, getting here, setting it up, plus possibly having to move our equipment out of the way to get that ladder truck in here. Same thing with St. Croix Falls, they're a half hour travel. Uh, Baldwin, they, they are a half hour, but they only have a quint, which is not for rescue. That is just water shooting out the end. Um, so they're similar too. So each way you look, you see a half hour just in travel time for those departments. And then it was asked, and of course for Amory, we, yeah, I, we need one, um, the Amory High Rise is not sprinkler. Um, so if anything would happen below the sixth floor, we have no ground ladders to get up to that top story. Um, we used to have an old banger ladders. That was, that took six people to put that thing up, but yeah, that was a heavy son of a gun, but it was fun. Um, and then for the, um, non-hydroid or the country, um, Ace had, had asked, you know, what, you know, would we use it for? You know, and I said, old farmhouse is for one. You know, barns, grain bins, sheds, they come on fire, we always use a ladder truck for that. Um, so on Monday and Tuesday, the ladders on the trucks were all tested. All the ladders passed, the ground ladders on the aerial, on the aerial and the, um, was passed. Um, the right side, um, when they pulled the ladders out, the ladders were all covered with hydraulic oil. So there is a hydraulic leak, um, coming off. Something he said, and I got the, the list of the repairs that have to be done. But there's a significant amount of hydraulic oil on, on those ladders. Um, that's, needs to be fixed. Um, uh, but the aerial ladder did pass, um, and the hundred foot and all the ground ladders. Um, like I, you know, Sharon came down and she did a tour. And I said, I highly recommend you guys coming down and I give you a tour of that, that truck, just to see the condition as it's in. So, um, another thing that needs to be considered is in twenty twenty-seven, the new emissions are be going into effect. And with the new emissions, it's going to be a higher cost for those engines. Um, so. That.
Okay.
No, I just gave you guys something to think about until we get down to the fire truck.
Yeah. What did you say spun on the New Richmond truck?
The turntable, the turret.
Oh, okay.
And yeah, it was a used truck. I think they paid like six hundred thousand dollars for the truck and it spun. Fracture. Yep. And yeah, it's out of service. I mean, and that's a major, major repair. So, I mean, when, when you start looking at used, you're really looking at used. And yeah, we found some used ones that were two thousand and two, two thousand and three for twenty-nine thousand dollars. But already.
Right.
Life is up on.
No, no, I was just curious what happened to that one.
Yeah, and on that, but you're already, you only have five, ten years left with, you're in the same situation we're in right now.
Right.
Uh, any question?
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Heather, I can call on you for the library director's report.
Hello, everyone. Hi, everybody. Uh, I wanted to start by sharing the summary of the twenty twenty-three annual report. Let's obviously, please, if you want. So this is just a high level view and a little bit higher level view of the activities, the program, the numbers of what the library did in twenty twenty-three. Really nice way to analyze data. It doesn't tell us much about the impact of specific library services, but it does share, this is how many checkouts we had, this is how many programs we had, this is how many visits we had from the schools, et cetera. So it's really nice to get that done every year and you all have copies of that. Um, so since we last met, the library held three adult programs, one all ages program, one teens only program, and seven children's programs with attendance of two hundred. In January, I attended an online winter library conference and took some webinars about building a strong library board, change management, leadership, and improving internal communications. Some exciting news, we have yet another teen volunteer at the library. So we've got two teenagers that have elected to volunteer at the library, it's really fun. This one is Alihan and you all met him at an earlier city council meeting. He is an exchange student and he is from the nation of Kazakhstan. And he is doing a Russian club every Tuesday at the library. So he brought in snacks, sauce, and gingerbread and he's doing a little bit of basic Russian language. And we had fourteen people ages, I would say about eight to their seventies who came to this Russian club. So it was really fun to see all the work he put into that and the response he got from the community. So every Tuesday afternoon, check the library calendar for details. And then also, the other big news is at Monday's library board meeting, we approved and implemented a fund balance policy. So now we have some parameters for what we will do with our fund balance. We have the policy just like the city has enacted. And part of that plan included allocating funds for the purchase of a book locker. I know I've mentioned that before, I'm really excited that it was approved and I've ordered it. Hopefully in mid-April we'll have it. So a book locker, the twenty-four seven book locker, you just place the hole, choose the book locker as your location and then come to our machine, it'll be outside, so you can access it anytime. Scan your library card and the door pops open and you can get your materials. There's a way for people to get library materials, even if they can't get here during our regular business hours. It's a really awesome way to add accessibility without asking for funding for more staff and more hours. And then one of the other things that was approved for spending the fund balance is replacing some of our older bookshelves. So the youth services department will see some new bookshelves and you'll see some new ones up here. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but, but thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, okay. Um, Jeff, please, Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this month, we spent a lot of time at the super plant. Everything inside the fenced in area, happy it moved and, you know, there's thirty, forty years worth of goodies there. Gone through about seven dumpsters, we got rid of the old trailers, just everything, got to have it out of there before they can do their job this summer. Um, we also helped sweep the streets and patching before the snow, so then we fought some snow. Um, we had two water main breaks, one on Bridge Street, one on Turd Street. And of course, after that, we had dirty water complaints, we flushed out all the mains. Then we had winter hydropress again, all that good stuff. They've been doing water meters still and I know people are calling in and scheduling them. Uh, did a bunch of brushing in the parks and on the streets. Started on the slides. Of course, the slides we ordered are just a little bit different, so we've got to redo the footings and everything on them. And then we started on the pickleball, getting that all torn apart, so that kind of put the slide off to the side for a couple of days. And then all the crushing is done at the dump. So all that blacktop, concrete pile, they're all gravel now that we can use ourselves or sell. That'd be nice to have cleaned up and out of there. Senior Center got over there, got the ceiling fixed, everybody's happy over there. Um, and then just a reminder, the floor egg thing is in March. I'm getting a bunch of calls at shop, you know. So that's about all I've got. Any questions?
Anyone? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, next item on our agenda is recycling committee, a progress update. Um, should I do it, Sharon, or are you going to do it?
That's what I asked you, you're doing it.
Okay. That's fine, and she's gonna, Sharon's gonna make sure that we follow through and tell you what, what we've been doing. Um, primarily, um, some of the outcome of the recycling committee to this point has been a much closer working relationship with the county. Um, Tina's been attending the last couple of our meetings that was not anticipated, but it's really helpful to have someone from the recycling center there every time. So we can bounce ideas and, and get, um, an idea where they're at. Um, we're working on an electronic disposal partnership. Every year, the county does electronic disposal and we're looking into and probably going to be able to do a, a second site here in Amory to, to get more people the opportunity to recycle electronics here. And it will probably be, we haven't said yet, but it will probably be the, the day following the one at, uh, the county. Um, we're working on creating and distributing some information in the form of slogan cards that would, um, be available at local businesses to help raise awareness for recycling. No one wants to put the one that I bring up and that one is recycle or die, but it's, it's blunt. Um, we'll be working to partner some additionally with the arts, parks and recreation uh, committee to add some nice recycling bins and looking for approval to get that, um, on Main Street along with the other, um, waste bins. Um, and then working, um, and in many different ways through uh, radio, cable scroll, electronic sign, newspaper, Facebook, a website and partnership with the women's club for getting our message out there. Mike has been at the radio station and Bob has threatened to kidnap him for, because of his voice, because. Um, and we're, we're looking at a couple of other um, locations. If we can work out, um, some additional locations for the county to cite some additional of their blue bins. And also promoting the portable recycling bins for. And also promoting the portable recycling bins for for our events. It worked really well at the Amory Fall Festival. They were used and um and approved the concept that we we need to purchase some of those things, so. That's where we're at. Did I miss anything, Sharon?
Got a lot of meetings.
Yeah, I did. Yeah. Um, so that's primarily informational for everybody, but that's where we're at. Um, hotel study. Um. It's a big one. And it's not something that we actually have to take action on at this meeting, but it's it's completed.
Yeah, so the hotel study that came back from Hotel R and D came back this week. Um, it's ninety-three pages. I do have a printed copy that'll be at City Hall if anybody wants to stop in and see it. And we could probably put it out on our website. It's not out there yet, but I believe you said there's some.
Yeah, and we need to, um, I think we've all had a chance to look at it, but there's varying degrees of how much depth you can go through. And I know that there were some comments from Paul Schaefer, that there are a couple of. Um, corrections that need to be made before we make it public, but just so everyone knows with the study that was done. Uh, compared. The location here with um uh many of the other lo- uh locations in our general area. Like New Richmond, Sacred Falls, Luck.
Baldwin.
Baldwin. That has um better coverage for hotels than we do. The study took into consideration the um the needs of the community, the needs of business. Recreation, uh all of those things and pulled together a lot of data that's part of the ninety pages. And provided us with some um. Results, conclusions, and luckily, there's about a ten-page summary at the beginning, so you don't have to go through the whole thing. But um it's something that we we hope to be able to use um going forward for discussions with. Developers who would be interested in partnering with Amory to build.
Yeah, it recommended a fifty-four room hotel. It gave recommendations of some of the different mix of rooms that should be in the hotel. Some of the brands that would build a hotel that size. Apparently, not all brands will build a hotel that's. Smaller size, so it summarizes all of that within the study.
Right. Right, so know that that will be published soon as soon as we have verified it's um some of those needs corrections. Any other comments from anybody here?
I was really impressed with it. I didn't know what all was involved in a hotel usability study. It included everything. I was really impressed by it. Um, after going through it and our conversations, I think Amy would could really benefit. By possibly having a hotel, a hotel in Amory, with all the businesses, the recreation. Added economy to the city so we can grow and be more prosperous.
Yeah. Yeah, I it first impression is so it's pretty well done. Anything else? Okay. Move on to the pickleball discussion. No.
It doesn't work.
No. It's talk real loud, please.
Well, I'm Dave Anderson on behalf of our newly formed Amory Pickleball Club. This is Brandon Schlock and. Somewhere, yeah, somewhere, Bob Brassmason and Craig DeLorenzo are listening, yeah?
Their voices floating through the owl up there.
Somewhere.
Right. Um, I guess as a quick little brief history of the last few months. Um, starting in November, uh we were asked by this council to uh get an organized group together. And we started working on that and we've had um a number of meetings. There's been seven of us working as a temporary board. And we have now our official paperwork and we are a Amory Pickleball Club. Uh, then we are asked by the council here um after uh. Certain things happened in November and December to um to uh do a fundraiser. Um, which uh we. On a short notice, we're able to get a pretty successful fundraiser uh together. It was uh matched by Ron Anderson and and it was very, very, very gracious of him. And uh we are thankful for that. Um, in January, then, we were um discussing. That we needed to get a a small committee together to start working on plans for. Project, the uh building of the new ports. So the four of us, Brandon, myself. The two uh or on the owl there, I guess, um are the committee. And uh we um. Uh, I guess myself, I started getting in contact with contractors, because I believe I was told by way of Bob that. You need to get three bids. Is that correct or whatever, but anyway, I've got hold of three contractors. Who do the painting and then I have. I was quite naive to all this, so I've been learning. So then we had to get contractors to do fencing. And not just fencing, but there's also the fence posts or the posts for the nets. And so that's done differently. We'll get to that detail later. Um. But anyway, we have got three bids now. I think you have the papers branded and handed out to you there. Yeah. Yeah. We have three bids and they're not quite apple to apple because each contractor does a little different. Yeah. So to break things down the best we could and to keep their identity out of this tonight. Um, they they we have A, B, and C. Um, one contractor, all he does is paint. So after the pavement is put down, you have to wait thirty days or they can do any painting on the surface. And then they come in and they'll sand it, scrub it, flood it, find any bird vases, fill the patches, and then they'll start their priming process and painting. And so this one contract, that's all he does. He'll paint it. I mean, do all that prep work and then you'll paint it and you'll put the stripes on it. That's what he does. He doesn't do any fence posts and he doesn't do any interior fencing. The next contractor. He doesn't like um coming in after somebody else has done the fence posts, so he does painting. Or or the net posts. So he'll come in and put the net posts in and do the painting, so his bid is more. The third company does the painting, but he also works pretty close with one of the fencing companies. I accidentally got a hold of the fencing company first and then I got a hold of him. And he said, oh, you've talked to so-and-so. I said, yeah, I guess I have. Yeah, okay. So anyway, their bid is kind of together. So what we did is we, and I got a hold of, we got bids from two different fencing companies. So what you're looking at there in the first column, I believe, is. One, one, one painting company with the better option of the two fencing companies. The second one is. Painting company who does the fence posts with the best. Or does the net posts with the best option of the fencing companies. And then the third one is the painting company that works with the fencing companies who also does the net posts. Okay.
Maybe a diagram.
So anyway, um, you see the numbers before you there. Uh, I guess going forward from here, how we work together. Um, you see at the bottom there where it says a gap? That is the number that is needed to finish the project. Um. For lack of saying ideas or where do we go from here or how do we discuss this? Is that something that's done here tonight or will we come back later? Um, I guess we're looking for guidance on that.
Yeah, I I just want one clarification because the way you're presenting it is. Uh, it looks like your group is is paying for all these activities and. Um, as the council, and and um, you know. And this is just me, so um I was under the understanding that we'd initially and put it up. And then the pickleball club would maintain it and and run it and things like that, but I. Um, I mean, I think we just gotta further define that.
I think that's accurate. We initially.
Well.
Fifty-eight for the blacktop. But then we also had mentioned that, you know, we wanted to help finish the project too, so. With the fifty-two and the fundraising efforts. You know, you're left us those three numbers at the bottom line, what they would need to finish it. Uh, are these numbers estimates or are they actual bids at this point?
As far as I can tell, talking to the contractors, this is our estimate. It's not an official bid because March first is kind of the magic day. That contractors, these contractors will find out from their suppliers. How much things are going to cost. Now, two of them said they don't foresee an increase. One told me, yes, I they told me that kind of the suppliers are telling him they don't foresee an increase. But. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, there was a thirty to forty percent increase. So when he says the suppliers say there may not be an increase, there still could be a five to six percent increase that they don't call. Right, so these numbers, I, you know. I can't guarantee that these numbers are exact because of what. Right, you know, how I was told. So there could be a slight, but I had two different contractors tell me that. They were told there is not a foreseeable increase.
Okay.
Coming as of March first, but they can't give a official bid.
Right, but these should be pretty accurate. It's it's accurate as we can get right now.
We can get right now.
Okay, yes.
Having spoken to all of these potential options, is there one that stands out to you as being the front runner, having those conversations?
Yeah, I don't think we should.
Well, it's.
Mention that.
It's.
I think everybody has their.
Well, actually. It's incumbent on you to recommend one of those because we don't know what these are and we don't know anything. The numbers are great and that's, we we absolutely appreciate that, but it kind of. We're not in the realm of of negotiation or.
Right.
Working with those people, so we really don't know.
Is that this meeting or we're going to?
Well, and we could, we don't have to do it exactly at this meeting, but.
Is there a, is there a reason that the low bid wouldn't be acceptable?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Um, but I I've talked with all of them. I I don't, I speculate there's reasons why. Um, but I I don't know if I'm.
Is that the one that didn't have a capping on the fence and the black fence and so on?
Well, honestly, we did.
Or the internal fencing?
We cut some costs out of this. So instead of having the black fencing with the coating on it, we've downed to galvanized fencing on the interior, which is a reduction of about four thousand dollars. Just over four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um.
Like that's across the board, right?
Yeah.
All of them.
Yeah, yes.
And that's the bids or the options and the proposal. The proposal's the one that um we recommended because of cost. Um, but the, all the options are with the same uh fence company because the other fence company. Um, the bid and what they provided was, just didn't make sense to even put that on a proposal or an option.
Okay, we we talked about, one time Jeff said that the city crew could do the the picnic tables. Picnic, yeah, which could cut six thousand dollar, well, I wouldn't thought it because it costs some material too, you know, but. Uh, the labor costs are probably, there are some savings there, so.
We looked online the the other night when we were doing a Zoom meeting at the tables that they were looking at and their ADA compliant and metal and.
They're like the ones that you uh see uh at um the farmer's market. Um, so they've got the holes in them. They're three hundred pounds. Our concern was not. Letting them get up and walk away or vandalism, that kind of stuff, but we're open to suggestions on this.
They have holes in them for the umbrellas to put in for shade and.
I just would mention to you that we're most likely going to camera that whole area, so once it's up.
That's nice.
Um, just because there's no reason to put, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars into something and then let someone come in and.
Yes, a lot of our considerations are are fencing and whatnot. Went to that because we're not putting any gates out there that, you know, people can stand on, swing on, destroy. Um, uh. And then we'll, we will be paying.
A bit. We'll have to have all of them then, if we put that stuff down.
The fencing all the way around, Jeff, or just the.
We love the three sides, we'll have to take off the one.
But the one side will have to all be.
Head pulling apart.
Yeah.
Yeah. They didn't have to have a lot of the water within their.
Can I ask for my notes? What are amenities and furnishings on this bed? What would that include?
Yeah, so uh. Some of them. We had was the uh like paddle holders, paddle racks. Um, a lot of it's for wind nets that go along the exterior fence.
That's a separate.
Yeah, that's the that's the wind screen line. Um, but we had the score clocks um was another one for hosting. And then I think umbrellas was another one. Um, I have it on my Excel file, so I can.
You guys did a good job, I.
All the fence on the other three sides is coming down also?
I don't know, just.
Okay.
Yeah, just the one on the side. Yeah, worried about costs.
Right, well, everybody is, every, just FYI, right from the get-go, I it's my impression that. Everybody on the council was aware there were going to be some extra costs. We got the blacktop paid for. We had the. The uh painting was, you know, my understanding, you guys were going to do that and that worked out favorably. So the fact that there's eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars more or less is not a surprise to me. I, that's something I expected. Um, great job. Be my, my take on it would be uh just to work with Jeff as far as the timing goes and uh. I think we should submit the council and order the equipment that's needed. I would make a motion to that.
All right. Um, are you specifying an option?
The option, the pro- the proposal.
Yeah.
A little, yeah.
Proposal one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion made and seconded. To approve proposal one and forwarded to the full council. Any discussion?
Should they at this point get hard bids on this because the council meeting won't stay until March?
Well, I, it'd be my thought that that we should. Lock them up right away as quick as possible, uh understanding that, you know, five percent on eighteen thousand dollars is not. What is that, you know, not very much money.
Sure.
Um, so if it goes up five percent, that's not a big red herring either, so. Um, but I think, you know, when we're talking about barrier fencing and uh that type of stuff. Uh, picnic tables is probably a good time of the year yet for Jeff to build picnic tables if we're gone.
Yeah, if the pool's down.
Yeah, I mean, if it shows why, whatever, you can't do that, but uh I would say.
But if they want the fancy ones, we can't build both of them, we can build the wood one.
Right.
Yeah, but you've got sources that you've gotten them from before and you can compare prices and, you know, perhaps.
But I I think we should order the, order the hard material as soon as possible because. Deliveries of everything being what they are that can go, especially because you're coming up to a season where that stuff will start. Really moving.
Right.
I drove by and see the big hole that's out there right now. I drove by and see the big hole that's out there right now.
You didn't want to get, didn't your hand didn't start going like this to.
We had one fellow stop off. Talk with him and and. Yes, we're having a mild winter and everything, but the. What would hold anything up would be road 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 restrictions. Before Monarch could get in and pave. Once they're paved, once it's paved, there's a thirty day wait, but the painted. But the fencing company, now if we go with option A, so we get hold of fencing company, they could get in. Between the two and three week period. Get all the posts in. Um, if they. We can negotiate whether they put up the chain link fence or leave it out. It'd be easier for the painters of the chain link fences and on the inside. It's all going to be up to them whether, you know, come back or not. But uh then they could get going on that and then after thirty days is when the guys come in and start painting and. Or it's going to be a weak process to do, as told. We do have a social area that's going. It's going to be about sixteen or eighteen feet wide going from the south to the north. And we have the gate. When you see us have gate down there, the fencing company is going to have a gate there. That will keep closed except for when we have our open play on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays for the pickleball club. And possibly whenever we have a function going on, that's the open. And then we're still planning on the two doors that were left on the south side, on the east and the west would be the entrance for. The rest of the time for people who are coming and playing, they just have to use those those two doors. But with the gate then. We can get picnic tables and other equipment in and out. For storage. Which brings up another thing I don't have time, but storage. Oh, that's. When it comes to uh. The wind screens. And picnic tables and benches and whatnot, I I don't know how much room the city has. Is that something that I'd be. On the pickleball club to find a storage unit? For the nets.
Talking about for the winter season.
The winter season, yes.
We'll figure it out with Jeff. There's time to figure that out. There's time to figure that out. At the moment, at the moment, we have a motion. In order. Any other discussion? All right. Hold in favor of proposal one forwarded to the. Full council, say aye. Opposed. So work.
Okay, I I don't know if you can hear me there here there, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say. Thank you. To all of the council members and the mayor for. Your willingness to uh work with us on this. It's been a great collaborative and cooperative effort. And uh. We, as you can tell, have put dozens, probably hundreds of hours into uh. Working with different contractors and and getting to the point we're at and we look forward to. Continuing to working with the council and with the mayor. To bring this to fruition, hopefully in very early summer, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Does this mean you won't be calling me every week?
I'm not making that promise.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate all of you brought to that.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, ladder truck financing discussion. What do you know?
Well, what I know is I think that a a motion is in order to send it back to the. Fire committee committee. Um, and talking with the. Two of the three townships are have the most um money into it. We've kind of reached a. Point where.
That gas was over the price?
That gas was over the price. I just briefly. Uh, a new truck, if we just went forward today with double the cost of fire protection for our entire area. Amory's would go from about. What Taylor eighty-six is a bar share now or something about right in that neighborhood. And it would go to like a hundred and sixty-six. Lincoln's would go to a quarter of a million.
Not sure what it currently is, but we did get. Preliminary price breakdown of a ten and a fifteen year. Potential bond and with the current breakdown based off of the percentages and the difference. Between Blackbrook and Alden and the equalized value, Amory's portion, if it was ten years. It'd be about eighty-four thousand dollars a year. If it was a fifteen year loan, it'd be about sixty-three thousand dollars.
That that was bonding it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't have those figures, but. So be my guess, I my thought would be to send it back to the commission. Uh Lincoln. Uh, and I can't speak for them other than I spoke to Ace and and he said they they. At at what we had for information at the meeting was just not acceptable, so. As did Alden, so. That's where it's at.
I have a question, you know, you talk about used and the low end of used. Is there such a thing as the high end used?
I I got one Chuck can speak to that and and Joel because they've done a lot more work for that, but I got one in the in the. You know, evidently Siri heard me talking about fire trucks. And uh so I got one on in my phone the other day. That was, I think, ten years old or eleven years old. And they wanted a million dollars for it. Basically, it was nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, so. If you figure a thirty year usage and depreciation, they figured it was worth half. The the issue with those and these guys will talk about that too is that. If you want to do something like that, I think that's still possible. But you have to have your checkbook in hand when they when it hits the internet because you get about. Maybe you got one good day before you have to buy it and that, you know. Wherever it's at, you got that means you got to go look at it. And decide on it and oh, by the way, here are the. Here's the money.
And most of the high end ones, the the newer ones. You'll look and you'll say on hold because somebody already put money down. So and it'll be available whenever. Yeah, so.
So what's what's the useful life on a new one then?
Thirty years.
Okay.
The issue is, and the the reason there's ten and fifteen years, obviously, is that. Those trucks, there's three three engines with pumps, uh two engines and a ladder truck for the neophytes. Because Amory's required to have for our insurance ratings, required to have thirty-five hundred gallons per minute of pump capacity. The ladder supplies fifteen hundred gallons of that. Could you do it? And the question came up. When I when I was talking to uh Lincoln is what would happen if we bought another pumper instead of a ladder truck? For because the pumppers are maybe five or six hundred thousand. Those are questions that we can't answer yet because we don't, we haven't haven't gone or even looked at that direction yet, but.
So where I'm coming from, first, I'm calculating the numbers and and. If you buy something new, you've got thirty years. If you get something ten years old, in my mind, you have twenty years.
Exactly.
For half the price. That's to me a better deal.
But at the same time, it's not that they run for thirty years. Perfect way to start to decline over time as Chuck was saying.
And it depends too. Are you getting it from a full-time department or are these things are getting used every day? Or are you getting like an angry party department where they're getting used?
Well, we, yeah, we'd look for that.
The issue, Roger, too, is that if you finance them for less than ten, for more than ten years. In ten years. Where there's another truck that's going to be ready to be replaced. And and we referred the the engine, the one engine. That's a ninety-four. Now, we're hoping to get twenty years out of that that truck, but that truck's going to be fifty years old when we retire. You know?
Do you have some type of replacement schedule for all your?
Yes, the the engines are every ten years you replace the oldest, the oldest truck. And the oldest truck then would be at least thirty and in case of the ninety-four, it's going to be fifty when they do it, you know, so. Just trying to be conscious of the expense. You know, we talked about a lot of things about, you know, well, what happens if we get an eleven million dollar factory out, you know, on at the end of that? That that makes a lot of difference and, you know, if we build. Uh, ten million dollars or twelve million dollars or fifteen million dollars worth of houses this year. That too makes a lot of difference. That amortizes the cost over. And that too, you know, that too, so it just. It it's just takes a little bit. I I I wouldn't say that the committee talked, you know, said, no, absolutely not, but I would say. We all went. When we saw the prices, it's just a lot of dough. So. So I I would say that it should just go back to the committee and work a little further with it.
I don't think we need to take any action to do that.
I think. It sounds like we're kind of getting backed into a corner where it's going to have to happen, but I would like to give. You all some time to figure out if there are any alternatives.
Absolutely, I I think that's.
Well, it's you have to find out. First off, how bad is it going to be? And then you go beyond that. It's okay, how do we make something work or how? Do we figure out a different answer? You know, all of those kinds of things. Sometimes you come back to the first one and say, well, it wasn't that bad.
Wasn't that bad. The downside is that, you know, if the price goes up a little bit. You know, we all we already came out with, you know, and Taylor. Uh, said that that was bonding for the money through uh.
All very preliminary. Get that interest rates type of things like that.
The information we had on that first price was that it was going to be at six percent.
And Patty said with the bonding too, with the. Going through. Federal government, they could actually think of how to get it down to under four.
Yeah, because the the numbers I read off were at four point seven five percent.
But one percent saved seventeen thousand dollars.
But there's no guarantee what percentage we get at this point.
Not until what, not until they have to say, yes, that that you actually put the number, right?
I'm guessing, yes. Yeah, because they're going to have to, because the interest rates are going to continue to fluctuate based off of the market.
And the presidential election and all kinds of stuff, so.
So the other thing that we have to keep in mind too, like Jeff had mentioned and the fire committee mentioned that. We have to be aware too that there's going to be, we will be putting additional money in the ladder truck that we have now. Didn't you say that almost? Constantly needing new.
Like I said at the uh meeting, it said. We're throwing a Band-Aid on a deep wound that just won't quit bleeding. It it is, I mean, that that ladder truck has reached its end of life. And yeah, we were really surprised. I was really surprised that actually packed, but when they did the ladder truck, they did not do a load test on it. It wasn't checked off.
It wasn't.
Okay. We'll ask the fire committee to. Continue to work on that. Issue. Number six, uh RFP, marketing promotional services. There were a couple of points in there and a couple. Um, documents. We've all been thinking about it, talking about it. I'm not sure. One of the things that we haven't done well in the past is with the. Immunity Community Club and the city working closely together in some of these things. Maybe this is an opportunity opportunity to do that. I I know people in other cities. I know people who are part of the Chamber of Commerce in other locations or have been members of the table. And talk to some of those folks. The the idea of a Chamber of Commerce is good. I don't know that. It can work here. And that's because we have a really active community club. And pretty active business community. And I would hate to disrespect any of that effort that's been done and if it's not an organic. Push for a community club. I don't know that the city should do that or look into those kinds of things.
I don't think that's our responsibility.
I don't think it is either, but those are things that were brought up.
Of course.
For us to take a look at and. That's an organic thing that has to come from the community or business community more than it does from the city. That being said, you've seen some of these things, uh requests for proposals for. Community coordinator for. Where should we go? We I think that we started out with. Oh, well, here's a good idea.
Right.
Why not look at it? There's a lot of pushback from a lot of different people. Not always helpful. But. At least we have to take a look at, um, where do we want to go with this? And how do we want to, how do we want to proceed?
A big portion of, excuse me, a big portion of the feedback that we've gotten was to. Slow down and back off of this and give it some time. There's no rush to this, which I agree there's no rush to it. But I think there, you know, are a lot of advantages to move forward, especially on the side on the city, the city, on the side of the city, excuse me. Uh, as far as looking at grants and certain seeking all grants and see what's available. On that side of it, we don't have anybody in the city right now that's actively pursuing that. I think that's one of the advantages we would have with somebody doing this. Um, just from one aspect of it.
I think it would be really helpful to identify exactly what we're looking for and then carve out something. In next year's budget for what we're looking for because. As it currently stands, there's not a line item for this in the budget for this year. And I and I would be very hesitant to just throw money at something if we haven't. Taken some serious time to think about exactly what we're looking for, and I think. The work that Patty and Sean have done to try to get on the same page is really helpful and I liked the description that we were sent that. They both had the chance to look at.
I think the challenge that we as a community have is that. Things are different. Than they were even. Five or ten years ago and while. Um, in the past, you know, you used to go to the three press to get all of your information. Nobody ever, I mean, that's not where people go nowadays. And I think we're missing out on a lot of opportunities and a lot of um revenue to the city and the businesses. Because we don't have. An outward facing presence. Digitally in some form. Um, we don't have anybody on staff. Currently. To do that. Um, so it is a big gap in promoting Amory as a whole, um its businesses. And all of the wonderful things that we have to offer. So I think not having this in place. I think we're doing ourselves a disservice um by not. Doing something now. Things are different and I don't think that it's. I don't know the grand scope that this could eventually be. I think we need to start where we are now. With. What we have ideas for now. And. Build on that. I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of. Proposing a contract any longer than a year because we don't know what's going to happen in a year. We don't know whether it's going to be worth our time and our effort. I don't. It's hard to put a dollar mount on it because. It. It's hard to quantify what someone would be doing. But the little things, I mean, the community club has figured out on its own that you can't run an organization all on volunteers because stuff gets lost. That you can't run an organization all on volunteers because stuff gets lost. And I think that that's one of these, the things that from the community club perspective, this would definitely help with, it's all done by volunteers. If you think somebody's paid to do all the posts that they do to promote businesses in town, you're sorely mistaken that it's volunteer. And so. I think that, you know, having a paid position, um, working in collaboration with. The Amory Community Club to make that happen and to get ourselves out on the map, um. I think if we don't do that, we're missing the boat. And I think if we wait for another year, we're really missing the boat, we've got wonderful things happening here. And I think now is the time, um, I do want to say that, um, from my own perspective, this has nothing to do with a person. It has to do with a person that came with an idea. And that is not what it's about to me, it's not about. Having the right person, you know, living in in the community that we're here right now, I think this is something that needs to happen. For us to grow as a destination, um, I think it would be, um, great for our residents to have more. More areas of, um, communication and, um, have the ability to, you know, see what's going on as well as. Visitors and. Making making this destination.
I would add to that, that, um, you know, everybody here has gotten emails and so on and so forth. Um, I don't think that the community club and. The folks that have been sending us emails are on the same page. And till, you know, until that can be solved, I think. We're kind of on our own for this, this was brought to us and was our idea and, and, uh. Hopefully, the the community club and, um. Whoever else is interested. Can present at least some type of unified front as to what they expect from this, um.
There was a, at the last member meeting, I don't want to speak out of turn, do you want to talk here? Since you're here. Uh, this was discussed at length at the last Amory Community Club meeting, I was not there. Um, but in talking with, uh, Sean afterwards and, um. In the meeting, it was discussed in great length as to, you know, what, what do they see happening? Um, and it was unanimous decision by all members present that they move forward.
So just refresh me, what is moving forward?
Uh, that they will put towards this position, X number of dollars is that, that dollar amount is also in stone, correct? Twelve thousand dollars towards the hiring of, or to, to pay for somebody that would. Or a company that would.
Whatever.
Promotions for Amory and its business community.
So where does the city of Amory come in here and who makes that decision? To, in a sense, initiate all this.
So they went out for bids, so they're asking for bids from people right now.
They are not.
Oh, they're not?
It was decided to.
Are together.
Yes, okay.
I understand, is that correct, we're, we're looking to 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 partner, to to partner these two together. To make sure that we cover both needs.
To bridge the gap.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, so. So Sean and Patty have met at least once to make sure that what we're looking for is.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to. Change direction and, and nowadays, if you want to get something done, you have to hire it done. The 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 volunteer thing just doesn't work as well as it used to, in my opinion, so.
Now, with this position too, my understanding is that they would also come up with like a slogan, we've always talked. That we really don't have a slogan for Amory. Um, that. I agree with, there's so many, I've even brainstormed in my head what different slogans we could have for Amory. And I'm sure everybody else, I think that part should be. Not solely for this person that we are potentially gonna hire, but we should have like a task force or maybe. I don't know, um, contests. So every, so the community is involved with what type of slogan we're gonna have.
So I guess my question then is what are next steps, I think we all agree that it needs to happen.
No, I.
Well, I want to get clarification now, the ACC is not looking for bids for.
At the moment, not yet.
But the city has a, uh, P O, correct?
No, we have to.
Both of those are in front of us. The the communi- community club has put theirs together and that's generally, that's what they will be putting out.
Yes.
Um, the one that is from the city is a, for marketing promotional services.
Right.
From our aspect, and it's going to be. Those two together.
Right.
Are going to be the, the premise for asking for proposal from a potential. Um, vendor, I don't, I'm not gonna say we're gonna hire a person.
Right.
Who knows?
Yeah, I'm looking at one.
And and I don't think that this is a, we're not gonna create a position, this is, um, something that you could be. Looking to ha- to hire as, you know, if you decided after a year that you want to make a position, that's different, but. At this point, I don't think we, we're not gonna create a position, we're just trying to.
Know the contractual.
Yeah, yeah, setting up a contract, so the question before us, I think, is. Do we want to go forward with these two requests? Joined together to look for whoever might be interested in, uh, submitting a proposal. Which then we still will be able to look at and talk about and see if that's a good fit for this particular job. And that's, to me, that means that could be, this is an intermediate solution. I don't mean, I'm sorry, I I don't mean that this is not potentially a, a, a long-term solution, but. If somebody says you should go slow, I think we can go slow and get something done. And I don't think, you said it best, I don't think we can wait, because we. Waiting hasn't worked out very well so far, we have plenty of things that we could have, have, um. Taken advantage of that we. Can't, because some of those opportunities are gone or we haven't had that information out to the right people, so. I think it's a matter of, do we want to submit these proposals into the world and see what comes back?
Does the city proposal have a specific dollar amount on it, or are we asking the people who come forward to provide us with their? I don't remember seeing a specific dollar.
But there's two draft city ones floating out there, so there's not just one option to take from.
Well, and I think what it is, and Sharon and I were both, yeah, we were all in a meeting with, um, Patty and Sean. And to discuss this, and as far as, um. It was determined at that point in time that, um, there would no longer be a community club proposal, that it would be. Amory coming, it would be. Amory representing Amory and the business community as it stands.
It would be the funding, whatever the, um, community center would be able to have. Go for this position along with what the city proposes, it would be all combined together as a one lump sum. Otherwise, it was just too divided, too separate.
Yeah, we don't want it to be.
Yeah, if there needs to be some cohesion.
And we also talked about having, um, we had also came up with some ideas about having that position of. More representation at the council meetings.
Exactly.
And and along with the community center too, because I think.
Community.
The better.
So, yeah, I think we move it forward.
Yeah.
There's enough positive feedback in the community that I've heard.
Right, there, I think there should be a monitored. Number associated with it, because there isn't anything now.
I thought the number was thirty.
Well, that's what we, that's what we had presented at the very beginning.
Okay.
When we were considering a proposal. But this doesn't contain anything at this point.
Right, and there's nothing here.
I would like to have some sort of number in mind, and I would also like to know where we're gonna pull the money from. Because I don't want to just say, yeah, let's spend the money and not have a plan for where that money's coming from, yes.
Believe it was mentioned at least once that that could come from the hotel tax revenue.
The hotel tax revenue goes to the community club, but we would retain that now. Because that would pay for the community club's portion of this position, that was what was discussed.
Did everyone hear that?
What's that?
That's what Sarah had mentioned, the sales tax.
Right.
Portion.
And that varies.
Could I mention something also, um, typically your project plans for your TIP districts, uh, also. We put in those project plans that marketing efforts are also a TIP eligible expense.
This is a body boy.
So I, yeah, without having a dollar amount, without having a true proposal, I mean, it's hard to. I have a hard time making a motion to put it.
Yeah, I I don't know that I want a motion, I would like to push it back to say, I think we want to marry these two together. If, and come back with that.
If the city went with twenty-five, twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine. Um, I think that probably would relieve us of, uh, the necessity to. Did that necessarily.
You know, because it's still, it's including, it has to include the, the portion from the community club as well.
Not so, we want.
If you're going word for word based off of your policy that you passed, no, technically would not have it all for RFP if you're. One penny short of it, but if you're actually looking to get bids.
Yeah, we are. I think that's the whole point, we are looking for somebody. I don't, yeah, I think we have to.
Yeah.
Well, before we can get an accurate bid, we need to get an accurate summary or.
We have to, we have to get these two, two requests put together as one. Delineate some of the effort and make sure that it's delineated that this portion of time is going to be. Working with, uh, for the community club. Uh, interests as well, I mean, we, we want to make sure that that's part of this description, so the two separately. Are probably where you want to go, but. We need one. Yeah, I think that's the point that's gotta be stressed, if we want one. And we need a dollar amount.
Yes.
And exactly what's going to be encompassed in it, because some of the stuff would be taking stuff off of City Hall people's current plates and stuff like that and. Stuff like that, so you're gonna want to make sure you have all of that.
Absolutely.
Figure it out.
You know, it would be really good to put this over here as your idea.
No, in a, in a, in a, in a bigger setting, you could say we'll, we'll refer this to committee, but we don't have one.
Well, however, coming up on the, uh. On the agenda is ad hoc committees, and I feel like this could be a perfect.
Yeah.
Opportunity for that ad hoc committees to, uh, and want us to deal with this. And come up with something instead of having, you know, multiple.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's what we have to do.
Yeah.
We're in favor, but we're not gonna vote on it.
Works for me.
Moving on. Orders, zero four, twenty twenty-four, chapter fourteen, section sixteen, ad hoc committees, and I don't have that. In anything I've got.
I don't have it either.
Oh, it's, it's clear, Ellen, it's, that's because it's a hundred and forty pages behind.
I got it on page nine.
You got it on page nine before I sent out the next one that added the ninety-three pages of the hotel.
Just as a, just as an aside, next time, send that separately. Any bigger documents, send them, send them as a second detachment.
Separately also, but for me to get it out for the public one, I had to put all ninety-three pages in front so they were in order.
Again. I don't.
Taylor, am I correct in understanding that the task force for childcare now would fall under this, or is that something separate?
I think so.
I haven't been involved in any of the discussion of the child force, childcare task force, other than I know it exists.
Okay.
So I'm not really sure exactly where that would fall, I believe that is what.
Yes.
This, so I'm guessing, yes.
I think it's page one or two in your pack.
It is.
Whatever, when that's word. Well, I saw it in the initial.
If you go back up to the agenda and you can click, it should send you directly to it.
Yeah, that's another hundred pages away, all right. This is, uh, the common council may create ad hoc committees by resolution for the purpose of dealing with specific questions or tasks. Which may arise from time to time. When establishing such ad hoc committees, the resolution shall provide for the following. A, identification of specific tasks or goals of the committee. B, how the ad hoc committee will report to the council on its work, C, the specific duration. And or objective of the ad hoc committee. And D, the size of this ad hoc committee as well as its composition and method of appointment of its membership. What does that mean?
I did not draft.
Oh, as to who, uh, appointed by the mayor and, and of who the membership is. It's just the, uh, establishing.
No, I know the rest, I'm just wondering what D says, because it doesn't make sense.
So how many people are on it?
Who's on it?
And who appoints?
The resolution shall provide.
The county council, I agree.
Yes, because like with the childcare task force, you guys all just said, go. Get a bunch of people, so I went and found people, so this would establish, okay. Who is the person that's going to appoint people and who, so.
Well, and it would be resolution specific, I think, so each one could be different. So instead of saying that the council is appointing it on May's meeting of every year. This would leave it up more for case by case interpretation.
Right, so the resolution for the childcare task force could be that the representative from the council picks. I think it leaves it open for a lot of flexibility depending on what the need is.
You're getting a pretty big molehill there.
Like I said, I didn't draft it, so I can't interpret exactly what Patty's thought process was on all of it either.
Okay, but now, the, the council's the one creating the ad.
That's always the case, so the mayor, for most of our committees, the mayor appoints the folks.
And it's.
Says yes or no.
In your ordinances, so most of your committees exist because there's an ordinance saying they exist. An ad hoc committee, my understanding would make it so. You wouldn't have this into your ordinances, this isn't something that.
Absolutely, the, the task force.
And it's for a specific time or.
Yeah, and that's where, that's why you do it by resolution and detail out these things in that resolution.
Yes, because you're not gonna have, in theory, if you have a task force or something, hopefully they're going to accomplish the task and you're not gonna be stuck with that.
Would be the.
Year over year over year.
Yes.
Makes sense to me, I'll make a motion to move on to full council ordinance zero four dash twenty twenty-four, one second.
Okay. After much discussion. Motion, Nathan seconded. Motion, made in second to forward ordinance zero four twenty twenty-four. Amending the code of ordinances of City of Amory for ad hoc committees. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Number eight, police staffing discussion.
Hello again. So the reason this is being brought up is that when I first came here. I was under the assumption that it was supposed to be the chief and six officers, and there was a few meetings where that was discussed several times. Um, I got word that, no, it's supposed to be the chief and five officers, so there's confusion on that. The department came to me and they had a lot of concerns about only having the chief and five officers. So they asked me to bring it forward. I'm gonna talk a little bit later, but I'm gonna let Kip explain kind of some of it, and then some of the other officers are gonna mark. About the issues that we're having, so.
Hello. I was gonna start off with some history of staffing at the police department, because we're the, the whole discussion. Um, back in nineteen seventy-eight, the department added Mark Meyer, uh, to make a five-person department. It was a working chief and four officers. There were no part-time officers at that time. In the late nineteen eighties, the department hired the first two part-time officers. In nineteen ninety-two, the chief became an administrative chief. Now, they had a chief, five officers, plus a pool of part-time officers within. In two thousand and four, we had a full-time SRO. That SRO position obviously gave us an officer to handle increasing number of school calls. And added an extra officer to patrol in the busy summer months, and we lost that position around twenty-ten. From twenty-eleven to twenty-nineteen, the department had a chief, five officers. And at least five part-time officers, uh, some of whom were working quite regularly. Around twenty-nineteen, the pool of part-time officers dried up, while police departments began facing a shortage of police officers. In twenty-twenty, the city approved doing away with the part-time officer budget, so the department could add another full-time officer. Making the department a chief and six full-time patrol officers. This is going to reduce the overtime budget and increase the double coverage time by six hours more per day. In twenty-twenty-two, uh, the city approved the hiring of a lieutenant from within the department. The lieutenant was going to be expected to work patrol shifts. No other officers were going to be hired, as it maintained having the chief and six people on patrol. Immediately after lieutenant was hired, the chief announced his retirement. Lieutenant was now needed to at the department until the new chief was hired and trained. Staff windled that the new chief was hired, and he resigned in July of twenty twenty-three. I became officer in charge, and we continued to try to hire to get to six officers while the city was seeking a new chief. When Mayor Rick, uh, was appointed as rare mayor. He visited us at the police department and several times mentioned that we would be a full staff with five officers and a chief. Well, which was greatly concerning to us. We've been talking with Patty about department needs for the upcoming budget, and she told me not to worry, as they already budgeted for six officers. Give me a printout of the proposed wage rates for twenty twenty-four that show wages for six full-time officers. We had a meeting, uh, met with Rick, Patty, Heather, Bethany, and John Schultz. Uh. One discussion we had in that meeting was the concern that it was being said that we would only have five officers and a chief. Uh, Rick explained that he thought we wanted a chief, lieutenant, and six officers, which was not the case. Full staff was explained as chief and six officers, and Rick agreed. As we were pursuing the hire of Jim Presley, I had a meeting with Jim, Patty, and Randy. Uh, as Jim will discuss here in a few minutes, uh, the staffing was extremely important to him coming in here. Uh, he, he was assured the department, when fully staffed, would be a chief and six officers. A short time later, we welcomed the hire of Chief Peters. Getting us to about now. I was recently shocked to learn the Amory Police Department budget for twenty twenty-four was for only a chief and five patrol officers. Uh, apparently, it has changed sometime between when I was officer in charge and when Chief Peters was hired. This level of staffing for police officers at Amory is the lowest since the nineteen eighties. It's about forty years ago. Twenty-four hour coverage of five officers is not sustainable, and the citizens of Amory could regularly go without police coverage. As a lifelong resident of the Amory community and a person who's dedicated their career to serving the citizens of Amory. I'm extremely upset by the decision to defund our department and the ability to adequately serve the Amory community. After the former chief and some very good officers departed, uh, we were all trying to pick up the pieces. Uh, the officers that stayed worked extremely hard to provide the best, the best police coverage we could with a few officers that we had. It was acknowledged by the council at the time, and you expressed gratitude, uh, to the department. And that may be why it was such a shock to me that the budget was then passed that cut an officer position. Again, to policing level, not seen since forty years ago. One more thing I'd like to share, um, you're probably aware of this, but, uh. Basically, a friendly reminder, on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Evers signed Wisconsin Act twelve. A new law that enacted, a new law enacted to protect and promote law enforcement funding. Municipalities will receive at least twenty percent more than their current state aid, according to the WPPA. Who told me that Amory will receive a hundred and two thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars at the beginning of July. The law provides that the new funds may be utilized for law enforcement via EMS, emergency response communication, public works. Courts and transportation. To avoid a fifteen percent penalty to local aides, local governments will have to demonstrate that any one of the following factors has not decreased from the year prior. Number one, the number of sworn officers employed. Number two, the amount of property tax levy dollars spent, unemployment of sworn officers, or three, the percentage. Of property levy tax spent, unemployment of sworn officers. Municipalities of less than twenty thousand, which is us, are not required to certify their law enforcement efforts. However, they are expected to follow the law as written. That's all I have, and I'll pass it on to Jim.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jim Presley. I am the newest hired in the Amory Police Department that's on the road right now. Um, I just wanna give you a little of my backstory. I started with the police department here in Amory back in two thousand and seven. Worked here for about seven years, uh, ended up going to the Barren County Sheriff's Office, where I worked in their patrol division about the last ten years. Um, kept heavily recruited, made it come back, God bless him. Uh, I did come back on a lateral transfer, uh, program that the city offered, I believe still offers, uh, and came back in October. I was asked to speak a little bit about how that transpired and how staffing, um, and rotation played a role in the accepting the offer and coming back. Um, I applied, I believe in September sometime. Um, there was a lot of city council meetings that piqued my interest, as I had applied and there were other things going on. Uh, having watched them on YouTube, um, and being in the application process, a couple of things caused me concern. Uh, my understanding was the department consisted of, uh, six sworn police officers and a police chief. Uh, and believing that the rotation schedule was two-day shift, two-midship, and two-night shift. Which is pretty standard, uh, with a two-two-three rotation, which is what Barren County was or is. And what it is here. It's probably the most efficient, uh, schedule there is for law enforcement, and it's very desirable for, uh, persons work in that schedule. There was talk in some of the city council meetings of dropping from six officers to five. On paper, I'm sure it doesn't seem like a dramatic thing to do. Um, knowing how the rotation works and knowing the police department was scheduling two-day, two-mid, and two-night shift. It's, it was a dramatic change, and it was concerning. Um, I ended up, I think we were already in kind of negotiations with the lateral process, uh, for me to come back. Uh, and I called a meeting with city administration. Uh, I voiced my concern, uh, the biggest being the structure of me coming back is what we would be that fifth position with a six to still be filled. Because I believe the department was down to around four at that time. Um, knowing I would most likely be that fifth position if we, if the department was cut from six to five officers, um, I would be that last guy. Um, not a big deal, except the fact we go from two-day shift, two-midship, and two-night shift. To do two-day shift, two-night shift, and what can only be described as utility position. Utility position in law enforcement is extremely undesirable. It's not a very good entry-level position. Ten years ago, cops would be more than happy to get a full-time job and work utility. Till they can move up in the ranks and get a better position. Those times have passed. Um, we're not getting applicants. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, it's, and we're scraping. It's hard. Bigger agencies are scraping. It's not what it used to be. I don't think that's a secret. So to change the entry-level position for the City of Amory or any department to utility position is futile. It's already a tough market. It's very competitive. Nobody wants to do this job anymore, to be honest. Um, and it's everywhere, and we've had a lot of tragedy in the area in the last year. That affects locally even worse than nationally, I would say. Um, that was a huge concern of mine. So I met with city administration, uh, I ended up being told, like Kip said. Uh, I was assured that there was some confusion over six plus lieutenant plus a chief versus six plus a chief. And I was assured six positions would be retained plus a chief. I felt confident in that, fortunately accepted the position, glad to be back. Um, fortunately, I am not the fifth position, um, so I don't really have that skin in the game. Um, however, obviously, dropping to five would be very, very unattractive, uh, for any potential candidate or anybody we're trying to recruit to come here. Um, and then if it's a long-lived position, if that person takes the fifth position and stays there. I doubt they'd last long. I mean, it's, I mean, the reality of that utility position is you're a filler. Um, and I'm, I'm working this off the assumption that that's what that fifth, fifth position would be, because I don't know of any other way it would work. You would have two-day cars, two-night cars, and that fifth guy gets plugged in wherever. Sometimes there might be some stability in the rotation, but it would be short-lived. Um, you're basically working sick, people's sick days, people's vacation, people's training days, and open positions that come up through retirements or other means. It's not a long-term thing, and the problem, it's not really a problem in Amory. It's good to have cops that stay a long time. The bad thing is when your bottom-end position is a utility position and nobody moves. That fifth position will most likely keep rotating. And that's what I was concerned about. My home life unfortunately would not have supported me being in a utility position, and that's why I called that meeting. Had I been thrust into that fifth position, it wouldn't have been sustainable for me, maybe for a short period, but not long term. So I think it really hampers recruitment, and it definitely will hamper retention, because I believe we have one officer in the academy right now. And if we drop to five, we're talking about him. And I understand there's a signed contract, or however that worked, um, I'm kind of above my pay grade, but, um. I think it'd be challenging for him, and I think it's gonna hurt recruitment and definitely hurt retention. So, that's all I got. Any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I started working here part-time. In two thousand and fourteen, working full-time at another agency. And actually came here, as I was a big one that was pushing for, let's switch from the six ten-hour shifts and a few days off. Let's drop our part-time, create a sixth position, do a twelve-hour shift. And that was one of the big deciding factors that eventually brought me to working here full-time. Is the six people working on a twelve-hour shift, and part of that is because with that twelve-hour shift, you get to have. A three-day weekend every other weekend, and if family's important to you, that's great. Family's important to me, and I like to stay busy. I have another part-time job even right now, because I like to stay busy. I've been working in law enforcement in city Polk County since two thousand and three, and the trend is, before we would advertise for somebody to come work. We have more applicants than we knew what to do with. We would be eliminated on silly things like they didn't know math things, so that we could narrow the numbers down. Now, we're just happy to get a few people to apply. So our shortage of staffing isn't just here, it's nationwide. But within Polk County right now, the sheriff's department is short, and I work a night shift for you guys. And at night, the municipality is north of Highway Eight. A lot of times, they might only have one car on, which now means that the sheriff's department is taking on an extra load, because. Not only are they responding to county calls, but they have to take the workload of all the municipalities. That doesn't have coverage, because we're in a short-staffed world. That means that I'm working by myself, guarding our city, protecting our citizens. And my next backup might be up in Frederick, because they don't have a Frederick car on. And they don't have anybody else to respond, other than sheriff deputies. I might not have a Clear Lake car on. I might not have a Clayton car on. I might not have backups for quite a while, to help me to protect our citizens and property. The best thing for that would be if we went on a six-man rotation, because then we're always guaranteed. Not always, because we're gonna have vacations and sickness and everything else, but the idea is that we're gonna have double coverage. And, and that's really the only answer, is to have that double coverage and take that position, saying, no, we care about our citizens. Care about our officers. We're gonna have a six-man and a police chief. Thanks for listening.
So part of the problem that I've seen is that when we were short-staffed, when I came in. Fifty thousand went to pickleball. Before I knew what my budget was, the budget was voted upon, which cut me another fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. So that cut me by quite a bit. Um, but my understanding was, when I started here, it was gonna be the chief, six officers, because I believe that was even brought up in my interview. Um. Then it was explained to me in January that the budget was set up for the chief and five officers. Even when I ordered the Axon equipment, it was based on the idea that we were gonna have the chief and six officers. That's why I ordered eight body cameras. So that way we had a spare. Um. Um, even in that meeting, at the Axon meeting on November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. It was discussed and brought up several times in that meeting that it was gonna be the chief and six officers. So you can understand my confusion at that time. The problem is getting to be, since I started working here, I worked numerous hours outside of what I was hired to work. I didn't track all my hours when I first started, as of right now, even though I didn't track all the hours. I have seventy-five hours that were outside of what I should be normally working. I've even picked up shifts on the weekend to make sure the guys had time on. The problem is getting to be, by the budget that I have, and Heather and I have worked on this extensively. Um, for the last couple of weeks. At right now, with the budget that I am proposed, at five hundred and seventy-five thousand for just wages this year. Just with our officers' wages and holiday pay. And that's not even including the officer that's at recruit school right now. Um, we have his wages in for the year, but not his holiday pay. That already puts us at five hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents for the year. So that I'm already over my budget, and I'm not even getting close to there. So then the other thing is with overtime. So the choice is, do we not pay any overtime? If we don't pay any overtime, that means open shifts. That means nobody's covering the city. Um, I don't know how much you guys want that, and we've already done that a lot in this last year. Um, the county's concerned, because talking with several of the sergeants and deputies there. They're stacking calls on top of calls, because the call volume is not slowing down, and it's not slowing down here in Amory either. As I've been bringing you guys the monthly reports, it's going up. And, um, I will say kudos to Jim. Last weekend, he actually was out patrolling, went and checked the doors of a business, and. Seventeen minutes after you checked the business, it was burglarized. Jim had come into the office to start working on some reports that we need to get done. So they left the road. These guys were watching Jim. Soon as Jim pulled in the garage, they pretty much hit the tavern. That's concerning to me, that these people are watching us. Where if the guys are coming in to do reports, and we have that afternoon car on both shifts for both days. Um, that gives somebody to be out on the road while the other guy's in here doing reports, that you're not vacating the city streets. So technically the hours that I have worked outside is over seventy-five. That is over, and I didn't include the first two weeks when I was here, three weeks. So that's over ten days extra hours that I've worked for the department. These guys are put in a lot of extra hours. These guys are covering shifts. They're taking time away from their families to cover some of the shifts that I've been having to fill. Um. And this is really putting the strain on all of us. Um, you guys in meetings have discussed about retention and recruitment. Um, and then the next meeting, I find out my budget's cut. It's really hard. Um, right now Sam is in recruit school and we were discussing this last night at our department meeting. And I could see Sam already looking at us going, I don't know if I want to come here, if I'm gonna get bounced around all the time. Um. The other thing that we need to look at, and I know Rick, you've discussed this several times about thirty-five hundred people as a population. I want you to understand that during every given day, Monday through Friday, Friday, we have sixteen hundred and fifty students. At the school. That bumps our daily population over thirty-five hundred, plus you've got. All the businesses you got. You got SMC, you got Cardinal Glass, you got QuickTrip, you got McDonald's, you got all these businesses. During the day, our population is well over thirty-five hundred. Um, so being short down to five officers and me. And as you guys have been seeing with all the policies and regulations that I gotta do, it's very difficult for me to get up. And cover shifts for these guys when I have other stuff going on. So a lot of times during the day, it's, I can't, I, I'm serious. I rarely seldom even get away from my desk because of all the stuff I'm working on right now. Um. PTO requests are coming in. Um, I'm gonna tell you, I got several right now that have approved that I'm not gonna cover the shifts because. It's either that or I have to pay overtime and I don't, my budget doesn't even have the money in for that. Um. And like I said, the considerable amount of time that we are spending on follow-up work, reports and stuff like that just for the. District Attorney's Office is putting a drain on the guys where the guys aren't on the street. So that's where I'm coming in asking to go back to the chief and six officers. Um, I also have what the proposal was before I came here. And that was proposed at wages of six hundred and thirty thousand, which got cut to seven hundred or five hundred and seventy-five thousand for wages. So. Any questions?
No questions, but I'm gonna make a statement.
Yes, sir.
In the municipality magazine, four months ago. There was a rating of, or a comparison chart of police departments. Um, it's an accepted norm across most of Wisconsin that one officer for five hundred people. That's a staffing recommendation.
I don't know where you got that, but that's.
Right out of the municipality magazine. Uh, so as we looked at a per capita. Price of police protection, Amory ranks way, way to the top, in the top ten percent across the state. That's what it costs each of the citizens in Amory if you divide it by twenty-nine hundred and eighty people. That's what it cost, that's where we're at. Um, I think the fundamental difference here is that, you know, we're paying, it, it costs us over a million dollars a year. Add a million, we were at a million nine seventy. Yeah, nine hundred and seventy thousand, I'm sorry. Uh. Last fall. And that's where the, where those cuts come from. I understand your, your concern about staffing. I want you guys to be paid well. And I think we are paid well. We just increased our, our, uh, starting wage for guys by three bucks an hour. Almost four, but three bucks an hour. Uh, we'll be negotiating a new union contract this fall. I'm sure of that. I, I don't have any issues with that at all. But I'm just telling you that a million dollars is more money than the community can handle.
Well, then my question is, do you want us to go with zero staffing?
No, I think, I think what we need to do is think about, there are times when, when we can get by with one officer on.
That's understandable. What I'm talking about is when guys take vacation, are you gonna want the shifts to not be covered? Cause if I'm gonna cover them, it's gonna be at overtime and it's gonna start costing me more than what I'm budgeting.
Are you gonna try, are you gonna try and cover them with two officers or one officer?
Right now, my only choice is I got one officer and that's what we're covering it with, is one officer. So we have no choice.
Cause we'll have five, right?
By May.
Yeah.
But once he gets FTO, so that's gonna push it out to sometime in the summer. But like I'm saying, if he starts getting bounced around all the time, I don't see him sticking around very long. He'll be looking for another one. Right now, we could, I do have six applications that I've gotten in, cause I thought I was doing six. That we could send one more officer into the next recruit class, which ones start until. June, July or August. I don't know the dates exactly. And they won't be able to come to us till either the end of September, beginning of October.
They're gonna almost be into the next budget.
Which will still be over a million bucks a year. Which is, you know, it just boils down to the ability to pay, I, that, you know.
That's something that was the, uh, Evers thing that one of you guys talked about. Is that annually or is that a one-time deal?
That, my understanding is that law came in for this upcoming year for twenty twenty-four. So it'll be paid out to the city in July?
Yes, beginning of July.
July of twenty twenty-four.
Annually or is it a one-time thing?
Well, I believe it's a one-time. I think it's a one-time deal because that was the law that Evers passed to try to get more, to keep officers retained and not lost. So.
I am very concerned about our retention of officers if we push them to the breaking point. And working in a mental health facility that's here in town, I can tell you I have been. In situations where I really need those officers there right now and it's very, very scary. Um, and the officers that we have have done an incredible job, so it really. It hurts me on a personal level to see them coming here struggling. Um, and so I. I want to find a way to find a balance for everything. Um, and I want to make sure that they are not getting pushed to the point where. They leave us because the people we have now are really, really good people and there are other departments that they can go to. Um, and. Well.
I'm just saying, any one of these guys puts an application in somewhere, they're gone. I mean, honestly, and I, I'll tell you another concern that the guys brought to my attention. And it might be because we're getting older, that if they continue to be pushed, that retirement's probably gonna come a lot faster. And I'm, I'm not using that as a threat. I know that's one of the possibilities that's coming down the pipe. That was, that was in our discussion in my office. So I do have that possibility down there.
And we know, we've been trying to hire to fill positions. We know that we're not gonna. If any one of them were to leave, we're gonna have a hard time replacing them. So.
And that's why right now I have six applications on my desk that we could bring in, interview them. Make a decision if we want to sponsor one of them into the next recruit class.
So these aren't even officers that are.
No, there, you're not getting applications from anybody.
I can't, I couldn't tell that by what you had said. You said applications, so I don't know.
All the applications, we did the same hiring process as we did this last time when we got Sam to come in. We got zero applications from anybody from outside agencies. These are all kids that are either in college or the tech school right now. They're gonna be graduating with their degrees. Come May, so they'll be ready for the recruit class whenever that next recruit class is, if we can get them. Ready to go and signed up beforehand. So, and if we get them into the recruit class, the state, as long as they pass the course, the state covers their costs. For the classes and reimburses them for mileage and meals. The only thing that the city's paying for, which I did with Sam, is that we pay them at seventy-five percent. Of the starting wage, which is like twenty-three dollars an hour while they're at recruit school. And they won't go to starting pay until they get on the road. They also sign a contract with us for three years. Um, to try to at least hold them here and get them established here so that they stay here. So. I'm trying to figure out ways to keep guys here so they don't leave me right away, so. Cause the sheriff's department's gonna be knocking on their door. If they're good enough to be here, they're good enough for the sheriff's department to steal from us. There's no doubt about it, so.
So can I make a suggestion? Um, I, I think, you know, part of the problem is there were promises made and, and not. Possibly kept and you got, that's, that's a problem. And so we, you know, I think, you know, and. For me, if I've made a promise, I need to keep it, okay? Um, having said that, we have to have more discussion here going forward. As to what policing in Amory is gonna look like in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. And things like that, you know, can we reduce the number of people? Through the use of better technology. I know some of the things that we're doing now, you know, to help you, I think. Are, are, are good, you know, ideas. So, um. You know, I don't like the, the idea that, that, you know, we're at odds because we didn't clearly communicate. Uh, what our intentions were.
Right. I'm, I'm confused on where the breakdown happened, where they were told six officers and then suddenly there's five in the budget. I am very confused about how that happened and that frustrates me because I feel like it would be fair to you for us to have. Conversations about that before you just get numbers.
Right.
Um, so I agree if that's what promises were made, then.
Cause like I said, when I got hired here, I was told throughout the interview process, that was me and six officers. We're going back to full staff. Um, and like I said, throughout the meetings, that was brought up several times and the same language was spoken. And I spoke to several of you guys and you guys were all under the same understanding that I had. It was me and six officers. So when I got the information that it was me and five officers, yeah, that's a shock to me because that's not what I had understood. That's not what I had planned for.
And just so we're clear on it, I did not ever tell you that we were going to six officers, but I wasn't in charge of that, so.
In that meeting, on several of those meetings, Rick, you said the chief and six officers. I watched the videos today. So it's on there. And the biggest one was that November fifteenth one. We said it several times in that meeting. So that's where the confusion lies. That's what my understanding was. Even with the, like I said, during my interview to take this position, that was my understanding.
Okay, so where did we go from?
Yeah, I, I.
This is, well, this is.
I guess I'll say that when, when you all were talking, I was trying to concentrate as much on what you were saying, but there was a lot of numbers thrown at us. Um, as far as, um, what was budgeted, where you are now. Um, so I've kind of lost track of where we are in, um. Where you are to budget right now versus where you would be if you were to add another officer.
So what was proposed to Kip before I came here?
I don't care about that. What I wanna know is where are we on the budget right now?
Right now?
Correct.
I would have to figure that out.
Okay.
Hey, yeah, no, no, and I would agree.
And that's, and that's I guess the point that we're at. I mean, I, I don't. I'm not concerned about what happened in the past. I wanna take today and move forward. So I guess I would like to have some numbers crunched so that we're given some accurate information as to where we are right now with our budget. And do we have it within the budget in that we've had less officers than what was budgeted?
Yeah.
Do we have enough to handle an additional officer starting September?
Right. Like I'm saying, right now, the projection is we're going over budget already, just by our, our wages alone with no overtime. We are already projected to go over budget for our wages.
Based on what?
Based on figuring out the yearly wages of each officer plus our holiday pay without any overtime and. Like I said, with that budget alone, it was budgeted for five hundred and seventy-five thousand. And just with those projections with no overtime, it is five hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Yeah.
One hundred and twenty-five ninety-six. So we're already projected to go over.
Right. I'd like to see where we are now. Yeah.
I'm not.
Well, I.
The overtime that we've already worked this year.
We may have a budgeting problem here.
Yeah.
There's no question that we do, but the question is, you know, are we going to be able as a city to sustain over a million dollar a year? Police protection.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
That's, that's, I mean, Chuck just got the same word here, you know? You can't raise the fire budget eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, you know, you just, you can't do that. Eventually you end up with a place where there's no more blood.
Well, right. So we gotta figure out how to, how to solve that, right?
Exactly.
We, we haven't done that.
I think that there's, this needs a review. Um, it's not, this is for discussion at this point, and so thank you for bringing all this information. Um, we need to go back to all of the budget items and figure out where.
Well, that's why we wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah.
Confusion of what.
That's what you should do and we appreciate that.
And I appreciate hearing from the officers too this year. We'd love to hear from you. Also nice to hear it from their perspective.
Well, that's why they came to me and I told them that they should talk to because they're the ones that are dealing with not having that.
Right. I'm concerned about the sheriff's department and not being able to back you up as well.
Right.
That's concerning because we're paying for that service too.
Right. But they're, like I'm saying, they're going call to call. Um, it's, if you listen to the radio at any time. Those guys are really busy and what's.
They've got a big county to cover.
Yeah, big county and the amount of drug stuff that's going on, which is getting way, way worse. It's not getting any better.
Dan, how many hours a week is there a resource officer at schools?
There's none. There's none.
None.
There's none.
No, we are handling all the calls that come from the school. One of the patrol guys has to leave and go handle a call at the school. So there are days that since I've been here. And I know it was Kip, the one day was at the school for over six hours and then at the hospital for another two. Um, and I think somebody came in and repeated at the hospital. Um, he's been there numerous times on different calls for, it, it mostly mental health and stuff like that, that we're there. For a long period of time. And if we did have a school resource officer. That I was just wanting to say in prior fall before I, you know, came here. Um, it does reduce your calls because that officer's there dealing with these kids and it, it really does help. So I mean, that's something that I was looking at down the road, but that would be possibly through a grant and then with the grant would have to be with the school. Because there's a portion that they gotta pick up and all that. So that's something that would be down the road when we start seeing. If the cops grant comes back around, which it could this year, or the SROs, because I know there's starting to be another big push again. To get the SROs back in the schools where they were trying to remove them before. So hopefully one of those grants will pop up. So, or even if a cops grant pops up just for a patrol officer, we're definitely gonna be trying to grab that if we can get it. There's no guarantee with a grant, but we'll sure try to get it, so.
Well, I think the other thing that we have to do is, is get some real hard numbers. Because this past year is not a reflection of business as usual in a sense. You know, and, and if the police wages did go down, I believe they did, it's because we didn't have enough people work, you know? But that's not a reason to get excited about them. And I'm an accountant. So, so we gotta do our, our job here too and we'll get this figured out. So, so we gotta do our, our job here too. And we'll get this figured out.
Thanks for listening to that portion.
Thank you. So, so now don't leave.
Your punishment is you gotta.
So.
You're just, you're just full of happy topics.
That's what I said. I'm like, man, they're gonna be throwing me out of here just because I'm bad for more and more. So. All right, the radio talks. So what has happened? And I'm not putting this on anybody, but there's been a lack of. Equipment purchases for the department. Um, what we found out here in the last month and a half, there's been several calls that have gone out. That the sheriff's department switches to their encrypted channel. We don't have encryption on any of our radios. So what happens is when they switch to their encrypted channel, we either hear squawking on the radio, which is a weird tone that's mostly in the office. Or between our squad cars and our portable radios, we hear nothing. We get a light that comes on, but nothing comes across because it's encrypted. So. The issue is, um, Jim was working the night of the homicide over in Osceola. He could not hear what was going on with that one. Kip and I were working a couple of weeks ago where the guy with the gun was out in the woods out by Frederick threatening to kill cops up there. We couldn't hear anything that was going on other than when, um. Tamara Larson, the chief up in Frederick got on her radio because she doesn't have encryption either. So we could hear what she said, but nobody else. Um, and then there was one more call and I don't remember, but they went encrypted and we had no idea what was going on. So that's very concerning to me. The other problem that we have is three of our squad radios cannot get encryption keys because they are the lowest of the low grade. Squad radios. The only squad that can get the encryption code, I'm sorry. Four of our current squads cannot get it because we have five squads. The only squad that can get an encryption code is our brand new twenty-twenty-three Durangle. Cause that's the only one that's got a radio that's capable of that technology because it's, uh, eighty-five hundred radio. With that eighty-five hundred radio, it also is set up already to take the eight hundred megahertz that Wisconsin is pushing to go to. And that's a radio band that Minnesota has already switched to. So it, it's coming down the pike from the state. I don't know when. But I did hear at the chief's conference that that conversation is back going to legislature again about going to that. None of our portables are able to handle eight hundred megahertz. These are seven years old or over seven years old. They are a twenty. I wanna make sure I get this right. A six thousand. Radio. The six thousands can only, because they're that six thousand XL, I believe they're called, or no, six thousand I. Or six thousand LI. They are the lowest band of radio that can be purchased. They can only take one encryption key code at a time. Which isn't a big deal, but we'd have to get those. And that's the first, one of the first, uh. Quotes that I gave you at fifty-five hundred dollars is what it would cost us. The sheriff's department right now is in the process of possibly, or not possibly, they are going to. Redo their whole dispatch center. And through that dispatch center, with their new radios, they may go from a, um. And I wanna make sure I get this right. Um, that they're gonna go from an AES encryption code. To possibly either a DES XL or DES OFB encryption code. So even if we spent the fifty-five hundred dollars, if they would switch codes. We would then have to have all brand new key codes put into our radios at another. Six thousand or whatever it would be. I don't know what the cost was. They didn't give us what that would be. Um, so. So what I asked of Eric up at, that's why you have two different quotes here. So Eric up at DSC sent me the quotes. Um, I talked with him in length and that's where we got the quotes of fifty-five hundred dollars just for the encryption keys. And then I said, what would be? And because of all these other factors that are playing in with the radios being out of date or getting to be out of date. Our batteries are starting to die. We've already gone through one set of batteries. Everybody's got a brand new set of batteries and these are starting to fail. So we'd have to have brand new batteries. Um. So with all the things that are starting to happen and going into place, I asked him. What would it cost if we went with three brand new radios because the discussion of getting rid of the twenty-seven? So three. New radios for the squads so we can have encryption in squads. And then, uh, I believe it was eight portable radios. Already set up at, which are the eight thousand radios so they can take the eight hundred megahertz. They can take up to every encryption key that's out there right now. They can, they can hold several encryption key codes at a time. So they would come already equipped with all the encryption codes loaded in. Um, so then. I got in contact, or I shouldn't say I got in contact, Motorola Direct got in contact with me. And they said that it sounded like they could get us better pricing. So I told them to go ahead and give me quotes. Well, their quote's the same as Eric's. So that's why there's two quotes in here. So this is actually directly from Motorola and then this is from DSC. So they're exactly the same quotes. They didn't. Give us any difference in price. I was hoping that they would, but they didn't. So.
I was just thinking you were sending in extra papers just to confuse us.
No, no, no. So we are looking for grants to help us with this. Um, so far we haven't come across any, but we are still searching pretty much. Heather's been searching. Nonstop to see if she can find us some grants that we can start getting on board with because. My understanding is sometime May or March, April is when all this grand stuff's supposed to be coming out. So I was kinda hoping we'd start seeing stuff now, but we just haven't seen stuff coming in. But through the chiefs. The new police chiefs training and the police chiefs conference, I got a lot of people to start sending me a lot of. Grant, different places to find grants. So we got a lot of information that has been coming in. So. We are trying to read the whole, the money issue. So brand new radios. Three squad radios, eight, um, portable radios, and that's the hundred and six thousand dollars. So on the very last page of the quote from DSC. Is the breakdown that they have right now going on if we were to finance it through them. So. Um, as you can see, if we did a three-year contract, it'd be forty thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars per year. Five years would be twenty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-one thirty-four. And then the seven-year option would be nineteen thousand, two hundred. And thirty-one forty-three. Different, uh, interest rates or lease rates, starting out at six point three down to five point nine. The nice thing about this is if we sign a contract with them to start getting the equipment coming. Once we get everything figured out and sign the contract and everything starts going in motion, we won't have to make a payment. Until the following year. So we could budget, push that out into the budget for the following year. We wouldn't have to make any payment for the first year that we have the equipment. Or that we sign a contract. And I did ask how much of a. Uh, wait time it is for the radios. And I asked Motorola, a lady from Motorola directly, she says, when your order comes in. That's when your equipment starts going out. So she couldn't give me any type of timeline of how long it would take. For it to get here. So, um, the nice part about having the encryption codes, key, key codes, I'm sorry, that are already loaded in. Then we just have to go to the sheriff's department. They hook their little gadget up to it and they put their encryption code into the radios and we're set to go. So then. If they would switch, we all, all we have to do is we don't have to pay anything extra. We just go back to the sheriff's department. They put the new codes in. We don't have to give the keys, like they call like the equipment to have. So. Lot of information.
So if you were to sign this contract today, you wouldn't have the equipment for a year?
No, no, no. We would, we, they couldn't tell me how long the wait is. But it sounds like it's fairly quick, but she just couldn't tell me a timeline. But you'd have the equipment. As soon as it gets here. And then you wouldn't make that payment. For a year. So, so yeah, we'd get the equipment as soon as it comes in. So. Like I said, I don't know what the timeframe is, but it sounds like it's fairly quick. Um, I could ask Eric, maybe Eric would have a better idea than the lady on the phone. I think she's just a salesperson. So maybe Eric would have a little bit better idea of how long the wait would be. Cause they would be all set to go with all the channels and everything that we need set up in them. Oh, yeah. So.
It wasn't long ago that we had done stuff with new radios. And I understand technology changes, but those radios are then. The old ones are taken over to the police or the fire department, right?
Yeah, we got our, our radios, we get six every year and every five years would be. Every year's a rotation of six, six radio.
I think you might be thinking about when this was discussed previously, there was previously discussion about. Them getting new radios and then theirs going to the fire department and nothing ever able.
Oh, it didn't?
No, that's why we're here now.
Yeah, cause these, these are over seven years old. The stuff we have, it's over seven years. So, but we did look online and we found it. Somebody called. That we could put them online for sale and I'm saying that we're gonna get the price, but somebody.
One sold on eBay most recently for no battery, no charger, seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars. So there's a chance that we could possibly sell them, but I'm not saying that there's gonna be many people there. Really looking to grab them because they're gonna be able to technology and they're not set for anything new that's coming up.
I don't think we can expect you to do your job without up-to-date equipment, especially when your life is on the line. So. Uh, and it's, technology's just gonna keep advancing. So.
So then it's just a matter of which option.
Yeah, the one option would be just, yep. Well, or you paid the fifty-five hundred dollars just to get the encryption keys. Which would only get us for our portable radios, not our squad radios.
Okay.
Because those can't even accept an encryption key.
But if they switch keys, then you're gonna have to buy.
We would have to buy the new keys because I can't get both. So.
So for the one oh six, you would have both the handheld and the squad?
Yes, the one oh six. Yes, yes. And everything would be all the squad radios, all the portables, everything would have all the encryption keys. That would be for the foreseeable future, at least here.
Well, it sounds like it's something that has to be done. It's just a matter of how, what is the.
Matter of how do you. How you pay for it, yes. I have a question for Taylor. If this is noticed as discussion, we can't take action. No, we can't take action if it's noticed as discussion. So. But if you could. There's a lot of stuff in there. And I think if it was. Just put down to just a couple of proposal points like that, since we have all the details. And make that as a proposal. Yeah, we could.
Like we've had things out of jump committee of the whole before and gone.
Yes. No, as long as it's, as long as there's notification, it's just that we.
You can't make a, you can't make a move.
Yeah, we can.
Can we come to a consensus on?
I don't know.
Have you had any conversations with the county about the likelihood of them changing codes in the near future?
Yeah. And they couldn't give me an answer because of this new dispatch center. All they could tell me was. There's a chance that the encryption codes are gonna change, but they can't tell me when. So I don't know if it's gonna be. Within this project. They just, they couldn't tell me. I talked to Don Burrows at the sheriff's department. They asked him because I figured he would know. And he said he couldn't tell me for sure. He said that they are gonna change encryption codes. They just don't know when. So.
Dan, a few years ago, and the county did an upgrade, um. We were able to, to, uh, get onto their same. Purchase agreement. And they, they were, at that point in time, we saved some money by just adding on what we needed.
And right now, because they've got all the updated equipment, the radios, their squad radios. The dispatch center, their grant is already in place. So we can't add on to their grant of their dispatch center.
No, they got a grant?
They got a grant to redo their whole dispatch center. So that's. Why I don't, I can't, I, I thought Don could give me an answer if they're gonna do the encryption code change. With this new dispatch center, but at the time he couldn't give me an answer. So. But I know that's supposed to be taking, they're supposed to be going ahead with it here, like this summer. The whole dispatch center is supposed to be revamped. This summer. So.
So when you're talking about that situation, I've been. Where were the guys out in the woods threatening to shoot cops or whatever? Aren't they already on a new encryption?
They are. But we don't have the encryption at all. So we can't, we have nothing. So when they go in their encrypted channel, we have absolutely nothing. We can't, we can't communicate with them at all. We just, we get dead air is what we get.
Understand. But I'm confused about this new dispatch.
So with the new dispatch center, so there's different types of encryption key codes. One is a AES, which the sheriff's department has now, which is the oldest encryption code that's out there. So they can choose. Which they probably will. They're gonna either go to the DES XL or the DES OFB. So that's a totally different encryption code key. So if they do that, if we would go and buy now the AES encryption code that they have now. And then if they switch come this summer because of the dispatch center, we would have to repurchase the new encryption key. For our old radios. Not if, not if we went with new, only if we went with, if we just put the encryption code in our old radios.
Okay.
Then we'd have to buy a new encryption code key to get to the encryption level that they would be at. So.
Okay.
And that's going into the radios that are currently having issues with batteries and things like that. Okay.
And for it to get more.
Putting a band-aid in it.
Yeah, it's, we, we made it work, but like I said, there's been some purchases in the past with the equipment that they purchased a lot of. Off-brand batteries that are now just absolutely not holding up to the brand name. Batteries with them. So they're starting to fail.
And you said that those, that, that equipment is currently seven years old?
Our radios, yes. When I looked it up, these are over seven years old. The squad radios, the three, the four. That don't have the ability to get encryption codes, they are just a very low-end radio that they can't even put the encryption codes in. So like I said, the only squad radio that can handle any encryption codes is our newest squad. Cause that's got the newest radio and that's the eighty-five hundred radio. So.
So to amortize some, something over seven years doesn't make sense because it's gonna be eight years old by the time we're paying for it.
I think at this point, the best that we can do is just. Allow this to go to council as an action item. And that you would present it with a recommendation for the, the five-year option, knowing that this would be. Um, a budget item that would have to be accounted for in the coming budget year.
And I will talk with Eric to see if he can give me a timeline of how quick they can get the radios. So.
Yeah, it, it does us no good if we're an island.
Cause I know St. Craig Falls went to eighty, they had the eight thousand radios before I left there. So they're, they're set, sheriff's department's set. Um, I don't know about Osceola. Um, I don't know about Osceola. And a lot of the small, other small A C's, just, they're going without encryption, which is a bad deal, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Item ten, handicap parking for Amory Area Historical Society. If you're still awake.
I'm Diana Weiss Haley, and I am the Secretary Treasurer for the Amory Area Historical Society. And as you know, we just got in the building, looking hard to get that ready, exciting. But what we're hoping that we could get would be two handicap parking spots, right, and. We get two handicap parking spots in front of the building, with, um. We have about ninety percent of our, our members are over the age of eighty, and I'm, or seventy, I'm one of those, so. But that's, that's our request, is if we did have two parking spots.
How many parking spots are currently, and how many parking spots are currently. From the corner to the alley. I'm sorry?
We get probably there, I would say probably four on the other side. You know, and there is parking handicap right on Main Street truck, but nothing.
He couldn't walk or sit anymore, so, he was gonna be my example of what.
So, we saw him hobbling out, it's good. Jeff, where are they on the corners?
Um, as far as I know, there's one right, one right from the. Empty building now, uh, used to be the haircut and blades, and then candy shops, and I think there's one right there.
There's still quite a ways for like Jerry.
Yeah, I, I.
No, we're just identifying where they are, that's all.
I guess, I could take pictures and bring it to you. Show you what's going on there.
My husband has a handicap sticker on his car, but I don't want him parking them.
But it's, you know, it's just, the council has to do this, because it kind of takes away from the other business, because they don't want, you know.
Yeah, there, there's one on, on Keller there, right?
What?
There, there is one on Keller, right on the corner there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, ninety percent, like I said, for council, I can get you everything laid out.
What would happen if, uh, because we, we are getting a new business in that. Building that I assume is gonna have a fairly high traffic volume. What would happen if we took that one off of Keller, can we do that legally and put all three of them? Pardon?
We don't mess with Keller and all that, it's all state stuff.
Okay.
They decided where those go. I'll get you more information for the meeting.
That would be helpful.
Great, thank you.
And can I, can I say we just got the new twenty-four edition of the Historical Society?
Are you selling those to the public?
Thirty-five dollars, includes the tax, and they'll be available at the library.
At the library.
Oh, great. Right, we're gonna have to have an, have action to forward this to the.
I will second.
We're being seconded to forward the handicap parking request for the Amory Historical Society to the council whole. Discussion, all those in favor say hi. opposed, thank you. MSA Zonings Administrator Services.
Good evening, um, we.
Are you that much closer to retirement now?
Very, very much closer, yes, last day tomorrow.
Sorry about that, but.
No, not a problem, not a problem, um, so, uh, in talking with and working with the, uh, city over the past. Several years, um, we're seeing more, you know, potential development coming in. As a result of the Tiff District, um, we, we're looking at a planned unit development over by the school. Uh, which is gonna be part of Tiff number ten, uh, you had your hotel study, uh, done. Uh, um, there's potential for, um, hotels coming in, and with. Uh, Ben Jansen was the zoning administrator for the, uh, for the city, um, uh, he left. And, and we're submitting a proposal to take over those services on a on-call basis. We currently have a similar contract with the, with Polk County. Um, they needed help with their zoning, uh, you know, uh, applications that came in and so forth. So, we're proposing the same thing for the city of Amory, uh, again, it's, uh, on-call, it's only. You know, you only get charged for the work that, uh, we actually do, um, which is, you know, kind of, uh. It's, it's, uh, uh, in that scope of work that we've proposed, so it is a, a time and material. Um, con- contract, so again, you know, as authorized by the city, we would only work on those things that. Uh, you would want us to work on, um, our planner that would, uh, uh, do this. Who is, is out of our St. Paul office, her hourly rate, um, is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, per hour. And so, um, yeah, it's, uh. We have that for your consideration, I think, uh, you know, with the, you know, staffing levels and, and with the administrator. Uh, having left, uh, we're, we're just offering to pick up that until, um, you know, you get. A more permanent situation, I guess.
I move to accept their proposal. Okay, motion made and just accepted to accept the professional services agreement from M S A. Um, listed as, um, an estimated annual fee, but it's time and materials.
Right.
Any discussion?
Just a yearly contract, just a yearly, right?
Uh, yeah, actually, you know, it is, until, you know, you have a more permanent situation, I guess, you know, and, and. Like, we've been doing this for Polk County for probably about six, seven months. Um, they requested that help because of, uh, staffing changes there. And so it is really basically, not an annual contract, but, you know, uh, on-call, and. Again, it's only for time that is authorized by the city. Ironically, probably about thirty-five years ago, I had the same situation, I was your city planner, uh, in Amory. Uh, when I was regional planning, um, and, uh, so now that my career is over, um. You know, this is coming back again, so.
Your career has come, come to a completion, not over.
Yes, yes, completion, yes.
Full, full circle.
Um, in the, the terms of the agreement, it's, um, terminate, you can, it's termination and be made by either party of thirty-day notice, so.
Um, just as far as discussion goes, I think it would be wise for us to look at investing in training someone on staff to do. This.
I will, I'll be doing like, the normal houses, the fences, the signs, that stuff. And I've already started doing that. But it's when you get into a planned unit development, and you're putting in sewer, and you're putting in water, and you're dealing with state-related. I mean, we're talking on more of the, the higher level, so, not so much.
They're not doing everything.
No, they're.
Right, right.
We'll continue to do, basically, the more, the more straightforward things.
Clarification helps a lot.
It will not be everything.
That's helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing done, call the motion for entering into the group professional services with M S A for zoning. Coordinator, all those in favor say hi. Oppose, thank you.
And I just want to, uh, thank you folks, the city of Amory for, uh, the honor of working with you. For the past thirty-five years, um, it, uh, it's been interesting, um. Gone through mayors, gone through administrators, and, uh, again, I, it's been an honor working with you folks, and, uh, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate you, I don't have a plaque, so sorry. Consider it a virtual plaque.
A, a beer would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys take care. Good night.
Okay, camera for Keller Avenue, this is something that was discussed, and I don't know if Patty's left any information at all.
I have heard hearsay here and there, of, there has been talk of putting a camera up in his office. That would face down Keller Avenue, it ties back into, honestly, I think the Summer of the Road project.
Well, it was, it was, it came up when we had our. Kind of working meeting that, that was something that we had said we wanted to, to deal with, and have it put up there. Because it's one of the best views of the city.
Dan and I talked about this, was it yesterday or today, forget, anyway, um. Most likely would have to be on the outside of the building.
Yep.
And it would not be tied into the security camera.
Not at all.
That we have.
No.
Um, and I, I, my own personal thought is it would be not, it would be nice if it was internet access. But I have no idea how much that costs to do that, like the, uh.
Just looking at the cameras we already have, you are gonna have to go with a very high-resolution camera, because it gets very pixelated. About half, the three-quarters of a block away, you can tell that there's cars and people, but.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm gonna say is, without a proposal.
Right.
I have no way to act on this one, because.
I think the, the idea, the idea was just that if we like the, like the thought, the thought. Find out some pricing and.
I think we wanna find out some prices, yeah. Isn't that sad, okay, we are at public comment. Please. Hey, Fran.
This is Fran Dunkinson, I'm with at seven twenty-three, half a circle. And just a couple of comments about some of the discussion tonight, and, uh, some of the agenda items. Um, I'm looking forward to sitting down and reading hotel study. And the RFP for the marketing and, uh, and promotional services, I was a little confused to see kind of two separate RFPs in there. So I think that that is a good thing to merge those, um, together, um.
Yeah, and they were both presented as draft, they, they were both watermark this draft, so.
Understand that, yeah, um, to, uh, get those words together to move forward, um, you know, again, I, you know, I'm kind of. Until that happens, and our, our, our RFPs actually, uh, receive for the services, um, you know. I guess at that point, it would be appropriate to discuss how it's going to be paid for. Uh, as far as using hotel motel tax dollars, that's a pretty highly restricted to heads and beds type of things. So I would maybe wanna get a legal opinion before I would wanna put any of those funds, um, you know, kind of towards that. Type of position, I don't know one way or the other, if it can, could be done or not, but I do know it's used, is restricted, so. For what it's worth, I would, um, ask the, uh, I would get a legal opinion on that, um. So the police department staffing discussion, uh, for me was, um, kind of the most, uh, interesting part of the evening here. Um, I wanna say, uh, and I wanna be really clear, I support the city council. And I also wanna be really clear, I, I support the Amory Police Department. The, uh, miscommunication or whatever happened about the budget, um, seems to be of some magnitude and consequence. That maybe at some point when all of this gets all sorted out. Um, to think about how this can be avoided in the future, uh, something like that. And once again, like I said last month, as a council, you don't get a monthly budget report. You don't approve the bills, you don't see any bank reconciliations, you don't get a treasurer's report. And I'm kinda, just kinda curious if, um, any of the council members sign checks, Rick, do you sign checks?
When it's required.
When it's required, yeah, so I think that a lot of financial confusion could be avoided. If the council received that information on a regular basis. I think, uh, questions about how are we gonna pay for things, how, uh, where to get funds from in amending the budget. Um, not to mention in a community this size, these are standard practices for segregation of duties. To pull the council into these things, and once again, let me be clear, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong. Or anything inappropriate, certainly, I would never, ever infer that. But this is a standard, regular operational procedures for municipalities of this size. That are usually part of an audit report every year, so just, you know, again, I think that that would be beneficial for the council. To be able to see that information on a, a regular basis, um, you know, as well. So, um, you know, kind of moving on, on the, uh, the zoning administrator, um, services, I'm just kinda curious. Um, you know, I was here through the discussion about the property, uh, that's getting up in municipal court. And there's, appears to me there's zoning permit issues, and there were building permit issues, mainly that permits. Were maybe not properly applied for, and I understand this might be pending litigation, so. You know, I don't expect any feedback or anything on that, but I am kinda wondering with zoning, um, if the. Uh, whoever is, you know, in charge of the zoning and doing the zoning, if they, uh, get out in the field. With a, a wheel or a tape measure, or if they just kind of sign off on permits off from an application. Because, you know, sometimes, you know, to, to get out there and, and verify what's on the application. Is probably a good practice as well, and can, you know, maybe help avoid some confusion or some situation or some future liabilities. Um, so that's my public comments, uh, for tonight, thanks, everybody.
Please.
Evening, Al. Scott Carlson, um, we've been here almost three hours, so I'm gonna try to be real brief. Tonight's meeting, um, I really feel like I need to go buy a storage tank for water. And some more bullets in case there's a fire or break-in at my, at my place. Seven, we only have five. The same two thousand people, okay. Been here four months. I hear things are broken every single time, every single meeting, things are seven years old, twelve years old, thirty years old. What are we gonna finance, what are we gonna finance, what are we gonna finance? When are we gonna look for the future? Because just in tonight, we've been talking about monies in around the three million dollar range. Right, and four percent of that, it's a lot of money. Right, so when are we gonna look for the future, we're saying, let's buy a new truck, well, I'll buy a new Chevy. But then I'm also gonna put ten dollars away every week, so that I can buy another Chevy when that one breaks ten years from now. Although it's a Chevy, so probably not good, but.
No, it will, yeah.
So at some point, we need to look forward, because if we spend forty to sixty percent of our budget in financing. This is why cities go bankrupt, it exponentially does not work. If you want help figuring that out, I heard there's an account right here. Maybe some of what Fran is saying, you can get a handle on this. It's important. Because we can't afford any police or any fire if we go bankrupt. Right? So when you bring to the, to the next meeting that you're gonna spend a hundred and one, one million, one point nine million.
That's a fire truck.
For the fire truck, right? It's actually two point four million. That's what you're gonna spend. That's what everyone should know. We weren't prepared. We knew that this fire truck was gonna last this twenty years. I heard that last meeting. But we didn't take time in twenty years to figure out how to buy another one. Maybe that's not how a city works, but I should. That's how successful people, successful businesses, successful cities maintain success. So that was completely what I wasn't gonna say today, but. Um, I do have some interesting thing on fluoride solutions. So if anyone wants to talk to me about that, um, you know, the fluoride, along with like iodine, salt, and you know, some of the other health and safety things over the last fifty and sixty years, you know, they solve the problems in some fine ways for the time, but there's some better solutions, I think nowadays, you know. Um, I mean, putting fluoride in the water doesn't help my grass, doesn't help my truck when I wash it, right? Um, and we have dentists and we have pharmacies right in town here. It might be a better way to solve the problem. So. Um, and then lastly, if anyone would like to also work with me, I'd like to discover, um, options for the compensation for the people that were impacted by amendment to ordinance zero two, two, uh, two zero two four, chapter four fifty, which is about the water wastewater treatment center. So again, I'm offering to collaborate. Um, I think we're smarter together than we are just a few people. Um, I've emailed most of you before, if you want my information again, I'll give it to you. Maybe you can create an ad hoc committee. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, anyone else?
I'll, I'll actually speak, since I see somebody in the room that has served our community for eighteen years and is now retiring. Betty, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Amory.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your retirement.
In the real, but.
I'm sure.
You'll get used to it real quick.
I'm waiting.
I'm here for fifty-two years in.
Wow.
What should do it, Jer?
Second.
First meeting seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.